This conference will now be recorded.
Frank?
Yes.
Lily asked me earlier, the fund balance policies and the procurement I'll bring up in my report, but she said, um, she questioned whether or not you would lead the motion. So I told her yes.
Oh, okay.
Because you understand what we're driving at here.
We need, do we need a motion for this?
Yes, we need, we need a motion to adopt each of the three policies because I need to turn that information over to the comptroller tomorrow. So if it's not adopted, it's not in effect and it becomes a problem. What are you doing with that?
Lily, can you hear us? We don't hear you yet, Lily. Oh, he's eating dinner.
Steve is eating dinner. What's for dinner, Steve? Okay.
Yes.
Chinese. If you please. You know, it's going to be hard for me having to behave right starting at this meeting time.
We know.
Hi, Lily.
Lily, we're not hearing you. I'm not sure if you're hearing us, but we're not hearing you. Hi. Hi, Jeff. I don't, you're muted.
Now I can see Mary. How come I can't see everybody?
You have the same problem I do. I can only see you.
Look up to the top of the screen, Jeff. Do you see where it says view? Does it say view who's talking? Or does it say view everyone?
Says view who's talking.
Click the down arrow and you should be able to select everyone.
As I live and breathe.
You're so special. I can't see everybody. I'm not on good behavior apparently.
You need, you need special stealth powers to do that, Mary.
Apparently.
Okay, I'm just trying to do a sound check with Lily. I don't think she's being here. We're not hearing her. Lily? Can you hear us? Okay, she's not hearing us. Wait, Lily, can you hear us? She's unmuted, but I'm not getting anything. All right, I'm going off mic for a minute. I gotta try calling Lily.
Okay, what, what happened?
Okay, you are there. We hear you now.
We hear you now.
I was talking and nobody heard me. Okay.
But now we hear you. We're waiting on Dan and Bob.
And I can't hear myself. Zach, what did you do?
It's not to be seen, but not heard.
Did you try talking louder, Frank?
I tried talking louder.
See, there's always a comedian.
Okay. I don't know why every time I see this screen, I want to sing the Brady Bunch.
Oh geez, I don't know. Maybe the little boxes, little people.
I'm very sad I missed what Steve's having for dinner before he disappeared.
I think it's Chinese.
Chinese.
He's shaking his head.
Oh, okay.
Dorothea, you'll have to check these earphones tomorrow because I can't hear myself. And the mouse, you can't turn it on. The switch is broken.
Oh, no. Okay, I'll take a look at it. Send it to the office. Zach, you're, you, no more laptop for you.
I can't give this computer to Zach. I mean...
I understand.
I, I don't even use the mouse.
What about the earphones?
I don't use those either.
Well, next time you send it in, just keep the earphones because those are for you only.
And the mouse.
Instead of ear to each earphone. Hey, we're still waiting on Bob and Dan. Um, it's going to be up to the board. We're past 6:30. It's your choice. You want to move along.
Do you have a quorum?
We have a quorum. We have...
We do.
Oh, yeah. I can, I forgot. Very good.
I'm open to starting the meeting if, if Frank and Lily are.
Yeah, Bob wants, Bob is trying to, to call in. He's trying to hook up.
Okay.
Do you see him there? Do you see him there, Dorothea?
I don't see him.
I can see myself, but I don't see anybody else.
Uh, okay. Let me... I don't see him. See him the right way. Lily, are you on the phone with him?
Yeah.
Yeah, can you give him the meeting ID and see if he's logging into the right meeting?
I did. I gave him, I gave him 446563885.
Okay. I'm answering the go-to.
There we go. All set, Lily.
Okay.
I don't know why it didn't go in the first time, but anyway, here we are. Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Hi, Bob.
Hi, Frank. How are you? I'll make a motion to call the meeting to order.
I'll second that.
Okay.
Dorothea, could we have a vote?
Okay, trustee Lamphier?
Lamphier, aye.
Trustee Stetser?
Stetser, aye.
Trustee Galusha?
Trustee Galusha, aye.
Mayor Corby?
Corby, aye.
Motion passes.
Does anybody have a conflict of interest they would like to disclose?
I have nothing to report. Trustee Galusha, I have nothing to report.
Trustee Stetser does not.
Lily?
Lamphier, I said, I did not.
Okay, nor do I. All right, uh, first item we have is Jeff is not, Jeff is here. Do you have anything to report? You're muted, Jeff. Some people would think that would be a good thing. Anyway, um, no, it's just the normal day-to-day stuff. Nothing on the horizon. Okay. Uh, then we'll move on to Mary Morosky's report.
This is quick. All right, I have vouchers for approval. There are within the vouchers, a bunch of invoices that reflect work that's been done on Village Grove, tree treatments and power and light installation. Other than that, it's the usual stuff and I just need an approval for, a motion for approval of the vouchers.
Go move. We have a second.
No, wait a minute. I have a question to ask.
I have a statement I should have said. I have in the report here for the vouchers, 243 and 253 repeat the one voucher. So the vouchers need to be reduced by 156930 for a total of 27666.58.
I amend my motion accordingly. Go ahead, Frank.
Mary, those, uh, number 253 twice, uh, therefore the installation of a light pole, is that going to be covered by somebody's insurance?
The 156930 is being covered by insurance, but we pay it and we're going to seek reimbursement for it.
Okay, that was the same question I asked. That's from the, the automobile crash.
Correct. We'll find out with the insurance company and hopefully everything will be out.
Okay, good.
Well, that's all I have, Mary.
Uh, so we need a second.
Lamphier, second.
Thank you. Dorothea, could we have a vote?
Steve has a question, Bob.
Go ahead, Steve.
Yeah, um, there was, there was a question on a couple of vouchers. I didn't know if those were the ones that were approved right now, Frank. You were talking about those.
Which ones, Steve?
The ones from, uh, from, um, Dogland in regards to research on building permits.
We haven't gotten to the legal...
We haven't gotten there yet. We're going to go there next.
Okay, all right, sorry.
Well, hold your, hold your thought.
Okay, ready for roll call?
Yes.
Trustee Lamphier?
Lamphier, aye.
Trustee Galusha?
Trustee Galusha, aye.
Trustee Stetser?
Stetser, aye.
Mayor Corby?
Corby, aye.
Motion passes.
Okay. Moving on to the attorney bills outstanding. Right now I have almost $44,000 worth of attorney bills dating back to August. I have not heard any approval to go forward and pay any of these. Um, I don't know if the board would like to go ahead with payment of any of these or not. Some of these do refer to just the trustees. It's up to you.
I, I think, Mary...
That's, that's part of problem one. Go ahead.
Just trustee Lamphier, I would suggest that at the very least, we would back out those, bill payments that are the trustee-related ones, uh, for Jeff that are not, uh, that were not related to, board-related. In other words, from the Planning and Zoning Board or the HPP, uh, that we pay those and, uh, and also the one from Chuck Malcolm that was trustee-generated, let's call it. I think that we should pay those because we don't need to run those past another board for, for their input. So since we do not need to do that and we have the ability to approve those, I think that we should go ahead and pay them. I can't speak to anything from the Planning and Zoning Board or the HPP.
I agree.
The ones that are just trustee, I think that we should, we should definitely pay those.
I agree. I agree. Because we know what they are.
Yes, we know what they are.
Right. And Dan just joined us, so he might, we, we might be able to, I don't know if, if any of those that aren't trustee-related have been run by the planning board yet.
All right, can I just go back to, just to verify the ones that we are going to pay? So under, under Osborne, the one for 1419, one for 2006250, 1122, and 165. And then under Hudson, both of them, 289750 and 432350. And the other ones I will turn over to, um, Dan and he can fill us in on it. There was a question, there was a question on the Zagland bill for 679, invoice 679 for 5943. I don't know if the issues on that have been resolved or not. So Dan, if you could speak to any of those would be great if we can approve any of them.
It appears you stepped away from the screen here.
Yeah.
All right, while we're waiting for Dan, I would also like to make a motion to extend, um, Mary's temporary appointment to April 2021.
April 2000, okay, 2021.
Yep.
I have a, I have a second of that.
Wait, can we finish the, is it possible to finish the, the bill pay section first?
Sure. But Bob's writing the agenda here, so.
Okay, I was just trying to stay on one thing at a time.
Apparently Dan had stepped away from the screen, so Bob was looking...
Okay, trying to take advantage of it. Okay, that's fine. I don't know if he knows the answer anyway. Okay, continue.
All right, so, uh, I'll make a motion to extend Mary's temporary appointment to April 2021. Do I have a second?
Lamphier, second.
Okay, Dorothea, could we have a vote, please?
Yep, trustee Lamphier?
Can I ask a quick question? Are we still interviewing? The last time we met about this, um, we were gonna, or someone was going to repost it just so we make sure that we continue to try to find someone so that it'll overlap with, with Mary there so we, that we have a good training opportunity? Has that been reposted?
Regardless of the specific direction we go in terms of staffing, I think having Mary in the office has proven itself to be a tremendous advantage. So I think we're covered. Uh, our staffing subgroup hasn't, because we've had conflicts, but we expect to meet in the upcoming week to decide where we want to go from here.
So this will get us through the next budget cycle, is the idea?
That's correct. That's correct.
I'm so excited.
She needs help.
Yeah, I do lots of it.
Okay, ready for roll call now?
Yes.
Trustee Lamphier?
Lamphier, aye.
Trustee Keating?
Keating, no.
Trustee Stetser?
Stetser, aye.
Trustee Galusha?
Trustee Galusha, aye.
Mayor Corby?
Corby, aye.
Motion passes.
Mary, it's no offense to you. It's not about you. It's about the, the lack of the ability of a board to fill up, to fill an open position in a year. It's preposterous. So it has nothing to do with you and your performance. I think the world of you. It's a, my no vote is, is a lack of faith in our, our board to execute on filling an open role.
Understood. Okay, that being, that being behind us...
Mary, do you have anything else you'd like to report?
Yeah, I have a ton of stuff that we have to go through, but I want to go back to the outstanding attorney bills for the HPP board and the Planning and Zoning Board. Dan, is there anything from these that could be approved? Because I haven't heard anything.
Not at this time, no.
Okay, these are getting really old, so I need to keep moving them along. All right, so we're gonna go with the ones that we had sent and I'll go with that. Okay.
Moving on. Wait, hold on, Mary. Uh, I've got a question on the Zagland bill number 679. Dan, I, number, number six, uh, number 679 for $5,943. Dan, I sent you an email on August the 6th and I, and I resent the email on the 18th. This, this invoice, and I'm going to read you the email because it's, because it's very short. I asked you to review the invoice for, for two issues. One, we were charged $3,016 for the preparation of, of an affidavit as the request of Judge Ark, $3,016. I questioned why it cost that much. And the other issue was, um, we were charged $1,627 for research by one of their associates that I feel was unnecessary. Um, Steve and I have discussed it and, um, he went on and he did research that he didn't have to do because we have a very experienced building inspector who I feel could have answered any questions that, that they would have had. So I question both of those charges. And Dan, if you could pursue that, I would appreciate it because I'm not recommending that we pay this invoice until we get an explanation.
Understood. Thank you, Frank.
Can I throw in one more thing here, just as a, to try to move this process along? Would it be helpful if I sent over the invoices to the two chairpeople when I sent them out to the whole board? Would they have helped move things along a little bit for their approval? I don't know what the...
What's the holdup, Dan? Why's, why is it taking so long?
And that, that's not the process that we agreed to. I, I don't know why it's taking so long. So, uh, I'll, I'll continue to work on it. Mary, it, you know, that sounds good. The challenge is that's not the process that, that we discussed and have been using and, um, so.
I am just, I know I turn them over to the whole board and you then do your thing with it. I was just, if you wanted me to buy more time for giving them the opportunity to review it, I would be happy to at least forward it to them as well at the same time. But if you want to continue as we've been going, that's fine. I'm just trying to get these people paid. Like Zagland's, Zagland's one from August 31st, that's for a regular meeting for the PCBA. That's the standard. One that she has. The other ones are lawsuits, basically. So I mean, those are the kind of things that I don't want her to stop and say she will no longer service us unless these bills are paid because then that would put us in a bad predicament. So that's all I'm saying with this.
Yep, understood. The, the challenge, and I don't have an answer here, guys. The challenge is, this is, we've been doing this now for a year or two and I'm not sure it saved us any money. It has certainly increased the amount of time it's taken to pay the people that work with us. So I don't have an answer on how we might rethink this to improve its processing. But I'm not sure it's solving the problems that we wanted it to. We haven't shined a light on a whole lot of extraneous charges. I'm not sure we've shined a light on any.
I found this on the web.
The whole purpose for this process was to ensure that we were not being billed for something that we shouldn't be billed for.
Understood.
And, and that, that one invoice, 679, we're billed like we were previously, which actually led to this process. We, we're, we were billed for research which was unnecessary. We should have never had to pay, or we should not have to pay for research into building permits when we have a building inspector who's highly experienced. And so, so all we have to do is just call and ask, why did you bill us for that? And with regards to the affidavit, why did it take $3,000 for an affidavit? All we need is an answer. And even if we catch one, uh, we're doing our job.
Agreed. And the answer that we're going to get is going to be the same answer that we've gotten every time, which is somebody specifically asked me to do this and it takes, it takes a lot of time. It, it, I understand everything you're saying.
I have a question, Bob.
Yeah, go ahead, Lily.
I might need my memory refreshed on this one. I might not even be remembering correctly. It seems to me that somewhere along the line, when we've had this discussion a couple of years ago, I believe it was, regarding extra work that Mindy would be doing for the board above and beyond her, is it $1,600 a month that was a flat fee? That the board chair or the board would write a letter of request to the trustees because they control the budget when it was anything beyond the, the flat fee that was being paid. So if they needed a, an extra work done or research or whatever it needs, that they would get an estimate for that work and they would send a letter to the trustees to say, yeah, requesting that it be covered. And that is, that is my memory of our process. So if that's different, it's changed. So what I'm seeing here is that we wouldn't have to go back and ask if these were all right because we would already have the letters from the, from the board requesting that extra, um, work that was being done and how much it was going to cost. I, I'm hoping that I'm being clear on that. Because we have the purse strings that we were responsible for any money being spent and that needed an approval before, in other words, they don't have a carte blanche, a sort of, um, approach to using their attorney. That's... Do you remember that, Bobber?
I think the intent was to have just some, uh, you know, uh, review of the work that's being done. So there isn't just a blank card being given to the attorneys. And, you know, the biggest issue obviously has been the litigation expenses associated with 75 Monroe.
Yes, I don't think these particular invoices are in reference to that. So, um, I might be talking about...
Well, there's other things that have come up on the, particularly with the planning board. There's been a few excessive expenses that I think are worth reviewing because they, they seemed like an inordinate amount of money for the tasks that were described. And so I, I agree with Frank's comments.
Okay, so that's not the process. That's, that was my question. The board is not required or requested to submit a letter of request to the trustees for extra expenses. That, that's not hap, that doesn't happen. Is that right?
I, I think, I think it would be appropriate for them to. The only exception might be if there's a, a time issue where there, there isn't enough time to have that process work.
Okay.
Okay?
Yes, I was just thinking this could have been avoided.
Correct. I, I think, you know, I think when we meet with the planning board, and I think we probably shouldn't meet with the planning board in the near future anyway, to sort of do a round table on implementation of the new code, that it's an issue that we ought to discuss because we do, are charged with being fiscally responsible. And, and obviously, you know, they, they've had some big bills.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. All right.
Can I, can I request, yeah, can I request one other bill to be paid? And that is the one for Zagland for the regular PCBA meetings, the flat fee for 1,600? Since that's just a regular...
Yep.
That's very reasonable. Thank you, Mary.
All right, so we're going to include that in the ones that we are paying.
So the, the, the big bill that's in question, the, the thing we're waiting on is confirmation from the planning board and the Zagland group about the work that was done. Just a clarification, is that what we're waiting for? And then we, we... Just a clarification, is that what we're waiting for? And then we, we...
Well, 679 is a bill that has the issues. So that one, I think, warrants a discussion with Mindy. I am not sure if that has taken place or what the total status of that is. But what's, for me, what's left out of the rest of these bills are all to do with the exception of the HPV matters because that is also regular, um, a regular, regular HPV meeting that Jeff attends, um, for 5,900. That, the rest of it is all litigation stuff. So, um, I just need clarification on it and I would like to bring these back up again at the next meeting to see if we can't get these cleared out. So whatever it takes to make that happen, that's all I'm requesting. Unless anybody has anything else that they can chime in on with that.
Steve has his hand up.
Steve, go ahead. No, I, you know, I, I don't know where we stand, but I, I personally like to know why and what the research on building permits was and the validity of permits. It makes me, makes the hair on my neck stand a little bit, to be honest. And so why they would spend that kind of money in research on the validity of building permits. Um, so I personally would really like to know who authorized it or if anybody authorized it. And I'd like to know who's going to research that and find the answer.
That's part of my role, Steve.
Yeah.
Okay.
Are you going to come back with an answer on that, Dan, or?
Yeah, that's, that's the intent.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we can move forward then. The next item on my, uh, list is the book. Sorry.
Were we making a motion to pay turn the Osborne Reed?
Yes, I forgot. Yes, that needs to be approved still.
I'll make a motion. Go ahead, Bob.
I'll make a motion to pay the Osborne Reed bill.
In the amount of...
Can I, can you amend that to include the Zagland bill and the Hudson Ross bill?
Yes.
Okay.
amended accordingly.
I'll second it.
Trustee Galusha?
Trustee Galusha, aye.
Trustee Lanfear?
Lanfear, aye.
Trustee Keating?
Keating, aye.
Trustee Stetser?
Stetser, aye.
Mayor Corby?
Corby, aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you, everybody. It's a huge help. I'll bring it back up for whatever's left open at the next meeting, just so we can keep this process moving. All right, the next thing on my list is the books as of September 30th. So I've got a couple of things to just review with you. Starting general fund, um, nothing basically on the trial balance. Our reserve is at 163, 682. That's good. Uh, going on to revenues, you guys can stop me anytime if I'm going too fast. Under Monroe County sales tax, we've got 117,000 and we are expecting another check about mid-November. So that hopefully, that's the one that we were really concerned about that might come in really low. I'm hoping it's not going to be true for us. So anyway, they're going with that.
So Mary, were we down 20% on the first one of those or was it a little less than 20?
No, we were, we were right on the money with the first one. But the second one was the one that I was really concerned about because that's the quarter that, uh, it will reflect the quarter that the pandemic started in basically. So, um, I'm hoping it will still come in at the right number for us, but I, I don't know.
Right. And what I mean by the 20% was we knocked down, we budgeted 20% lower in expectation of this.
Correct.
Because it, it just happened, the, the timing happened well. And so I'm curious how we hit our, our mark on the first one.
The first one was fine. I can send you the detail tomorrow.
That's fine. That's all I need to know. Thanks.
All right, so that's that one. Moving on, um, onto page two of the revenues under the state aid, New York State AIM and mortgage tax will come in in December. On the mortgage tax, we also lowered the number. So I'm hoping that the number comes in higher than what we had planned on in here. The next payment will be in June of next year. So that's kind of to be monitored. The CHIPS funding I have in here for 68,000. I have, uh, will have by the end of the week a CHIPS reimbursement, um, to file to reflect, uh, the work that's been done on Village Grove, but I will let, um, Zach talk about all of that. Um, under the inner, inner fund transfers, 5031, there is 54,400. That just, to remind the board, that is where the bond payment is coming from, which is the capital improvements plan. Um, account, a fund that I have in here and I'll show you that as we go through. So that's that one. Um, going into the expenses, I am not seeing anything that is of any concern to me at this moment in time. Now, oh, on the, on the expenses, on the last page, which is page five, under bond anticipation note, there's the 544, which I just talked about on the revenue side. So once it hits, it will come out of there and that'll clear it. So that's that. As of 9:30 this year, our fund balance is sitting at 791,000. By end of year, projecting it at 185, 41. So we really need to be mindful of the 531 figure because, um, it, we can't fall below a 10% um, fund balance figure reflecting, based on the upcoming, on the current budget because that's a place where the comptroller likes to nick us for and may have already been on the list for their, um, complaints for us when they do the write-up for these last few years because, well, you'll see in the policy, I have, uh, 15% versus 10. So I'll also talk to that in a few minutes. On the sewer fund trial balance, the restricted assets, there is a little issue going on with that, which is, which, what I will be talking about next. So just keep this page in mind when we have to go back to it. Also on page two of the trial balance, the G909 account has a current un-reserved fund balance of 706,000, which is about 500,000 too high in this account as per the comptroller. We need to correct this. We need to, um, create another reserve basically to take some of the money off of this to satisfy them. But that also requires us, actually Bob and Frank and myself and, and Dorothea to go back to review the GALLI plan and how much of that GALLI plan we can apply to today's work or have to make something new out of. But I will revisit that hopefully again, maybe in another couple of weeks. Um, so that's that one. Nothing on revenues and on the expenditure side, on page one of the expenditures under the inner fund transfers, I have a bunch of reserves there. 11,013 and 4,500 and then another 3,000 that I will be looking for a motion for in a few minutes. So that's that one. That's another page you may have to go back to. Sewer fund unreserved, uh, fund equity at the end of September is 680,000. If everything pans out as it did, we're going to be at 704, 600 basically. And that is way too high for the comptroller. So again, that's part of the GALLI plan and the reserve that we need to talk about again. That's that. Next page is capital improvements for 2015. That is the bond. Currently, we have 63,000 dollars left in the bond. The inner fund transfer and the expense that I just showed you on the, uh, general fund, this is where the 54,000 is coming from. We can't use it for anything else other than to pay down, um, pay down the bond. So as per discussions in the budget process, uh, earlier on, 54,000 dollars will come out of this fund and then next year in the budget, we'll have another 9,000 to apply to the new, uh, payment that we'll have to make. So that's that. Nothing on revenues, nothing on expenses because there's no business going on there. Fund balance here is at 63,469 for year on and that, whatever we take out from bond will roll over into the new year for the new bond payment. And the last page on here is just the balance sheet from our payroll account, which is basically, um, a wash account. Whatever is taken out of our paychecks is turned out, over to whatever agency it was requested for. This is just the workings of it. So that's, that's that. I would need a motion to approve the books as of 9:30.
I'll make the motion. Do I have a second? Do I have a second?
I'll second it. Trustee Galusha.
Okay, trustee Keating?
I'm going to abstain. I did not have time to review these in detail.
Trust, trustee Lanfear?
Lanfear, aye.
Trustee Galusha?
Trustee Galusha, aye.
Trustee Stetser?
Stetser, aye.
Mayor Corby?
Corby, aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you, everybody. All right, moving on. Sorry this has taken so long. I'm just trying to clean house here a little bit. I was anticipating to be my last meeting. Um, in regards to the sewer funds and that restrict, going back to the sewer trial balance, we have, uh, there was two things that had happened that should not have happened, but they did and now we're trying to correct it. And the first one is, um, when I was transferring monies into the sewer reserve, I ended up putting everything into the larger of the two reserve accounts. It should have been split up between the pub and the general repair reserve, which if you look at the trial balance, um, I'm referring to accountant G232P is where money should have gone to, but instead it went to the CD that carries the last three accounts. So the 5,500 that I put into that account wrongly, I need to move into the one above, but I need your permission to be able to do that and have it fixed at the bank as well. So that's number one.
All right, so we need a motion. I'll make a motion. Do I have a second? A second, please.
Roll call, trustee Keating?
Keating, aye.
Trustee Galusha?
Trustee Galusha, aye.
Trustee Lanfear?
Lanfear, aye.
Trustee Stetser?
Stetser, aye.
Mayor Corby?
Corby, aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Okay, going on to the second of the two. Uh, it's a motion to move monies from the municipal choice to the sewer pub reserve, which is what I had requested of the bank um, at the end of last year. However, due to the change of personnel, they forgot to move the money. So I need to correct that to reflect that properly. So I need a motion again from the board to be able to move this money from one account to the other and to go into the reserve.
So moved.
Uh, do we have a, I have both of you moving at the same time, so.
I'll, I'll second Lily's motion.
Okay. Roll call, trustee Keating?
Keating, aye.
Trustee Galusha?
Trustee Galusha, aye.
Trustee Lanfear?
Lanfear, aye.
Trustee Stetser?
Stetser, aye.
Mayor Corby?
Corby, aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you again. Now, so that we don't have this problem happening again, out of the 2021 budget, which is the numbers that in the expense column on page one of the expenses at the bottom, inner fund transfers, I have, um, repair reserve, vehicle repair reserve, Wood Creek reserve and pub reserve. And what I'm looking to do is because this account is flush and I don't have to worry about the funds really in this account, whereas I wouldn't be able to do this motion on the general fund, I would, uh, like the board to please give me permission to expense these items out and withdraw the money and put it into the proper reserve, um, for this fiscal year.
I'll make that motion. Do we have a second?
Lanfear, second.
Thank you.
Roll call, trustee Keating?
Keating, aye.
Trustee Galusha?
Trustee Galusha, aye.
Trustee Lanfear?
Lanfear, aye.
Trustee Stetser?
Stetser, aye.
Mayor Corby?
Corby, aye.
Motion passes.
All right, so that is a motion for, one motion for both of the, um, transfers. The only other thing I'm going to just leave with the board and Frank, I think you and I need to discuss this a little bit more. I did not include it in tonight's motion. Um, off the, off that, uh, inner fund transfer there, I have a facilities reserve of 5,000. I would like to talk to you more about that. So I did not include a, a $5,000, uh, transfer there. Hopefully we can straighten that out for next time and, um, I'll talk to you more about it tomorrow. Okay? All right. Moving on here. I have also, the next thing is the fund balance policies. The first one is the, uh, one that was adopted in June 14th, 2016. In this second paragraph, I reference, um, let me see, second paragraph, second sentence where it says, "The village board will take measure necessary to maintain an unrestricted fund balance within 15% of the most current year's budgeted appropriation." Um, we had at one time planned on modifying this number from 10 to 15,000, which we ended up, I don't know, fell through the cracks or something, but this was one of those things that the, uh, comptrollers called me out on and because we had dipped below the 15% number, which would mean that we should have had, um, a plan that would restore the difference over the next five years, which I wasn't aware of. Quite honestly, I was assuming we were doing the 10th to 15. So in order to correct that issue, I had revised that, that, um, fund balance policy to reflect the 10 to, it's in paragraph three and then on the revised version where it says 10 to 15%. That's for the general fund. So I would need a motion to approve this, um, update.
I'll make a motion. Oh, sorry, Frank.
That's okay.
Who's making the motion?
I'll make the motion to...
Frank can second it.
Okay.
All right, we, roll call, trustee Keating?
Keating, aye.
Trustee Galusha?
Trustee Galusha, aye.
Trustee Lanfear?
Lanfear, aye.
Trustee Stetser?
Stetser, aye.
Motion passes.
You forgot to ask me, Dorothea.
Oh, Mayor Corby.
Corby, aye.
I follow my screen. People jump around.
All right. Thank you for that one. Um, in talking with the comptrollers this time around, and I don't know why they didn't bring this up last time, but they had requested, uh, us to have a sewer fund policy also. So basically the sewer fund is a, is a new, um, new policy. The wording is identical. The only thing that changes in this is the name of the fund. Everything else is fine. Um, and the account number again, it references G909 versus A909. So I would like a motion for the board to approve this one as well.
Would someone like to make a motion?
Yes, I'll make the motion to approve the revised sewer restricted fund balance policy.
It's not revised, it's new.
New, new, I'm sorry. The other one was revised. New policy dated 10/27/2020.
Thank you.
Well, Stetser will second.
Okay, roll call, trustee Keating?
Keating, aye.
Trustee Galusha?
Trustee Galusha, aye.
Trustee Lanfear?
Lanfear, aye.
Trustee Stetser?
Stetser, aye.
Mayor Corby?
Corby, aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, thank you very much. The comptrollers will be so happy. All right, the last item for me is, um, when they reviewed, when the comptrollers reviewed our procurement policy, we had some dis, some discrepancy and I don't have the initial one in front of me, but uh, maybe Dorothea, you can talk to this a little bit. The bottom line is it was a discrepancy to do with the exemption. So we had fixed... So we had fixed it so that it would be not conflicting one section of the procurement policy with another to include, you know, the grid and all that. So Dorothea, do you want to elaborate on that anything anymore?
From what I can see, their concerns was we were showing that professional services is exempt. It is exempt to a point, but it was showing up in our exempted and then we had a policy for it. So we removed it out of the exempted, created its own section of professional services. So hopefully that will clean it up. I know Frank wrote the policy originally for the professional services, so if you want to touch on that, Frank?
No, no, it's okay.
Okay, so all I did is try to clarify it and clean it up and hopefully it works for everybody.
So I would need a motion to approve the amendment to the procurement policy.
Can other people that are affected by this weigh in on this? I've been asking for about three years to try to get some of this remedied, and it sounds like some people, some changes have been made. I have no idea what's going on, but the other boards need processes that are not onerous to retain professional consultants. And I don't know what the current policy said, but there is a lot of them where it says we have to go out and solicit multiple bids for every single one, come up with statements of work. And when it's a three hundred dollar contract or five hundred dollar contract, that didn't make sense. So that's why there's a whole matter of them being exempted from going out to bid. I have not read what this revised policy is, but this has been something that's been, it's been very laborious in the past to try to comply with this policy.
Well, first, first thing I'd like to say is the policy we had was based on what the state requires from the comptroller's office, because they want to make sure that everybody is getting competitive bids as much as possible. The caveat to that and what I think the amendment allows is if there's a consultant that someone is using that has a particular expertise, where it may not be practical or feasible to get multiple bids, say for an expert in historic masonry, for example, then, then you would just need a description to describe why, why that person was qualified or why that contractor was qualified.
So I think my request would be just to defer adopting this until you can go, you can talk to various boards about it that have to use it?
Justin, we did adjust in the policy, there's a grid and anything under a thousand dollars doesn't require bids or an RFP that can be approved by Zach or myself to go ahead and move forward with that professional service.
All I'm requesting is that to consult with the other boards before adopting it is all I'm requesting. I don't know what the document says, I haven't read it.
I would encourage the board to go ahead and adopt this, it can always be reamended. The comptroller is looking for this change and we'd like to get them to decide before we move.
We have to stay on a schedule, Justin, because the, we're being audited right now by the comptroller's office. So, but we'll send you the document and we certainly will take any input as we have in the past on every issue from the other boards.
And if I could add something, this, this, this change was more of a clarification of the prior policy. All this information was in the prior policy. It may have been a little confusing, but it was in there. This, this really does clarify it. For the example that you cited, Justin, there is a grid that Dorothea referenced. For contracts between one dollar and a thousand, the approval of that is at the discretion of the purchasing department. No verbal quotes are required. So that actually covers what you were talking about. Between one thousand to four thousand nine ninety-nine, we do require three quotes as we do for five thousand and over. But there are exceptions which were contained in the prior policy that allow for emergency situations that allow for other purchases, such as for state contracts and other items. So this is a very short, clearer policy. I suggest, Justin, that you take a look at it. I'm sure you're going to agree what I've said. But for this evening, we do have to get this to the comptroller, to the auditors. So I go along with Dorothea, we ought to get this, we ought to get this through and pass so we can get this to them tomorrow.
I think that there is a motion on the floor, is there not, Dorothea?
Actually, I don't think we had a motion.
Would someone like to make a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve the revised procurement of professional services procedure. That's a motion.
Okay, I'll second Frank's motion. Could we have a vote, Dorothea?
Yep, trustee Keating.
Keating, aye.
Trustee Galusha.
Trustee Galusha, aye.
Trustee Lanthea.
Lanthea, aye.
Trustee Stetser.
Stetser, aye.
Mayor Corby.
Corby, aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Justin, I will pass that on to you tomorrow.
Thank you, everybody, for all the motions for my report tonight. I appreciate it. The comptrollers will be thrilled. And I also want to say thank you for extending my service to you until April. And I'm done.
And thank you for a very comprehensive report.
You're welcome. You too.
Okay, next item we have is minutes.
Bob.
Yep.
Justin Hughes is here for the CCA and we, do we want to move that along?
Yeah, we could, why don't we move right to that? Hi Sue, how are you?
Hi, I'm well, Bob. Thanks for having me. Apologies, I was a little late joining in, so.
You didn't miss anything but normal village business.
Great, well, thank you for having me. Bob, did you want to say anything before I get started, or?
Yeah, I, I think in, in our efforts to be more sustainable, we first talked about CCA, I think in two thousand seventeen, I believe, when the consortium of Pittsford, the Village of Pittsford, Brighton and Arundecote began investigating the feasibility of, of doing this. So this has been a long process in coming, but we wanted a little explanation of the differences between the twenty-four lookback period with the current bids and the previous unsuccessful bidding in July was only a twelve month window.
Okay, great. So maybe I'll just give you kind of a framing, you know, for several months. We've been discussing CCA and how do you decide whether what you're going out to bid for is a good value? And what happened in Westchester County was that they launched their pilot program with this idea of comparing the product you were seeking to the previous twelve month utility average. And so that's how that kind of concept has gotten spread around the state as, as a tool. But it is just one tool. There's nothing unique about using the twelve month benchmark. There's other ways, obviously, that we could determine value. In fact, industry never looks at historic averages, they look at futures markets, right? So the last twelve months have been particularly low energy prices. They've been at thirty year lows for electricity. And that's actually for three primary reasons. One is that our country is cracking for gas all over the country, and so there's a glut of natural gas. And natural gas is the major source of generation. So the wholesale market for electricity generally trends around what's happening in the natural gas market. The second factor was last winter was particularly warm, so the gas that would have gone to heating homes wasn't needed in this high demand. So again, keeping that glut of natural gas high. And then, of course, we were hit with the pandemic, which drastically reduced electricity demand as businesses were shuttered. So as a result of those things, electricity rates were very low. And so when we went to bid in July, I guess it was, or May, the benchmark, the twelve month lookback was less than four cents per kilowatt hour. What is more typical in our area is a price closer to between five to six cents per kilowatt hour. So we knew it was going to be tough to get a product that was going to be below the previous twelve months, but Juul tried and demonstrated that we were not able to, to get such a bid. And in fact, the best bid we got was four point seven cents. And that's because, in part, because the futures market, you know, so the industry is looking at what's going to happen, and they were seeing that the prices are going to trend up. So, you know, ESCOs aren't willing to underbid what the futures market was predicting. Does that make sense so far? Because I feel like I've talked a lot.
Yeah, very excellent.
Okay. So that led us to deciding on how to bid this last round. And there were a number of conversations around, well, do you want to use a twelve month bid? Or do you want, or benchmark, or do you want to look further back where the twenty-four months might more realistically represent the marketplace? And if you're doing a twelve, twenty-four month product, maybe having that kind of, you know, symmetry made some sense. And some communities like Brighton and Kenan Daguen Village of Victor were willing to shift to the twenty-four month benchmark when other communities really weren't quite ready because they felt they wanted to communicate it better to the communities first. So we were able to get a number of bids that came in at the twenty-four month benchmark price. And so, of course, Argene's price has been going up. I don't know if you've noticed, but like in August, it was almost five cents. This month, it's four point six cents. So the twelve month average had gone up to a little bit higher, but it was still four cents. And the twenty-four month benchmark price was just under a four point three cents per kilowatt hour. So we went to bid and we did get a hundred percent renewable offers that were just below the four point three cent mark. And so let me stop, stop there. Does that make sense so far?
Yes.
Okay. And so the question then really is, what is the best path going forward? And that allows you the most flexibility? And like Brighton has taken the approach or took the approach that, you know, maybe they want to give themselves the most options going into the bidding process rather than restrict themselves early. Because as you noted, you know, if you wanted to change your mind and hadn't already decided ahead of time, it makes it very difficult to like get the bid and respond to the bid because usually ESCOs give you a price that's only good for that day. So it's worth having a conversation at some point about what makes the most sense and what your parameters are, right? So twenty-four month might make sense, twenty-four month. And you're not committed to any of them to say, I would consider these, right? And then you all could set your priorities beforehand on that process. Another thing you can consider as well, comparing the product to what you could get as an individual. So for myself as an individual, I can choose a hundred percent renewable electricity in New York State. I can go to the Public Service Commission website and I can show you all the offers. There's one offer that's the same product that Juul is, is contracting for. That's a hundred percent renewable, no exit fee for twenty-four month fixed rate. And for that product, it's six point one cents per kilowatt hour. So that's quite high, you know. So Brighton had also gone into that last bid saying, well, they would consider even like a fifteen percent savings compared to that retail price. So all of these benchmarks are really just a way for you to determine what does value mean? And you can kind of come to conclusions for that, yeah.
Thank you, Susan. Sorry, I didn't mean to step on you there. Especially given that prices are rising. That's, that's the key in the whole thing. Because it's, it's not good business to wait for them to rise so that we meet an average and then we've lost out on savings. That's the basic idea.
Right.
Well, I think, I think also the premise that all of us entered into the consortium to do this was, if this is a way that we could save our residents money and be green at the same time, that's basically the offer that we've told the community we were trying to achieve. But I agree, knowing that the prices of the past year were unusually low, I think a twenty-four month window back is a better reflection on what would be a competitive bid coming in. What's everybody else thinking?
No, 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 the, the math on that doesn't work. With, with them rising, you want it, you want a shorter window.
So the last six.
They were quite high two years ago, then they fell and now they're rising. So if you use a twenty-four month, we're not going to, we're not going to save any money. We're going to wait until the average pulls up. We, we went over this last time in, in the graphs. We're going to wait until the averages come up and then we're going to lock it in and we will have just lost a bunch of money.
So just if this is helpful, when Glenn went out to bid last, he also had provided that, right, the six month Argene average, and that was four and a half cents, right? And that's kind of where we're trending, the market is going to be between that four and a half and five cent is what's expected.
And so we can lock in today at roughly, what? Remind us again of that.
Well, the best offer that we had gotten for the twenty, was beating the twenty-four month benchmark, and that was just under four point three cents.
Right.
We'd have to go to bid again, like tomorrow or next week if you are, are ready to do that. And we would have to see what the ESCOs were ready to give us this week. Because as you recognize, the energy market changes quickly and, yeah.
So to the trustees, I asked this question, what's the harm in going out to bid and seeing what we can get?
Nothing.
There, there's no harm at all, exactly.
No harm at all.
Yeah, and to Bob's point, you know, Bob, I think you made a very important point, which was the reason we went into this, to save money and get renewable resources into our chain. And so my basic thought is let's, let's try and do it. I, I really do think we are absolutely splitting hairs on the twenty-four versus twelve month thing because I, I just don't see that anybody cares. If we can save them money while, and lock in a low price while they're at historic lows and showing a trend for rising, it's only going to get more, the savings is going to be greater the more time that goes on. And we do what we said we would do, which was get renewable energy into our stream.
I, I think you're right, Dan, because I think what we promised our residents was a, a competitive rate and a sustainable way of doing that. And I think if we can still achieve both of those goals, I think we would be satisfying what we said we did.
That, that's a very good point, and that's focusing, I believe, on the right thing. Saving money, renewable resources, that's what we promised them. So what do you need from us? Go ahead, Lily, sorry.
I'm sorry. So this discussion allows us to give you, to utilize the twenty-four month, twelve month, six month, whatever the most advantageous lookback is. We're, we're saying any of those. Look, whatever gets us the best price, that's the lookback that we want to use. Is that right? That's what we're saying, that's what we're agreeing to.
We have to set some parameters, but.
Yeah, and, and we weigh it when it comes in. We, we weigh, what's the twenty-four, what's the twelve, what's the current price? Is it New York State renewable? Is it national renewable? What's the trend that we're seeing? So are we seeing things go up? Are we seeing things go down? We kind of put all that in a blender and make it, make a decision.
So now we've got all of it on the table.
Right.
Okay, great. That sounds great. Thanks.
Yeah, I just want to clarify that it's best. really for the person who is tasked with making the decision to be able to make that decision that day, right? You're not, you don't want to have to, yeah.
Right. We can't linger on it because if we're gonna do it again, we might as well schedule a special meeting the day of the bid, so we could approve potentially the bids we're gonna receive.
Or that you would be authorized, Bob, as we have authorized you in the past. If it came in, so any of those are on the table for you to authorize. You don't have to go back to the trustees and you would be able to answer to that bid. I think that is what, the most expedient way to handle it. Okay.
And so if we decided, if we decided tonight, Sue, to go ahead, when, when would this happen?
Yeah, so that's a great question, Bob, and I don't have a great answer for that. And what I can tell you is that Glenn has been watching the market every day because Aranda Coy also wants to go out to bid. And right now, he doesn't think this month he's gonna get the price that we need, you know, that, a good competitive price. So he's watching and waiting for that window. And that's one month or two months from now. I can't really predict. Yeah.
Thank you. So, so if we agree to go out tonight, then at any time when the market hopefully approaches a competitive price or offers a competitive price, then you would act on it.
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
Bob, when that, if, if that comes to you, will you run it by me? Because I, I've got spreadsheet models that tell us what's the growth over the last year? Where is it over the last 24? What's the trend over the last six months? I've got all that. I just need to plug in the new figures. And that'll tell us kind of how much are we saving? Do we think this is a good deal? I'm, that's my dog going crazy in fact. So if you pull me into that discussion and you and I can look at a spreadsheet real quick, I can tell you what I think.
That'd be great. Thanks, Dan.
Susan, this is Jeff Turner. What, how much lead time could you give the board before you go out to bid? So I'm, I, I'm hearing a lot of stuff in flux. If they, they could handle, if they could schedule a special meeting for the, the day and time that's convenient for those bids coming in, and all of this stuff that's in a state of flux could be resolved at a special meeting, and the board could decide as a board what to do. If that's not possible, then they are gonna have to set some parameters for the decision maker. So that, so that the board can pre-authorize by motion slash resolution the parameters. So which, is it possible that you can give us a predicted date, say 10 days in advance?
I, that typically, that's what happens. So how the process has played out usually is the latter kind of explanation where most boards pre-authorize the supervisor or mayor to make the decision, and they've already set the terms of what's acceptable. But when Jewel goes to bid, they, they will put the RFP out on the marketplace for a week to two or three weeks. And so he'll know what day he's expecting the bids to come back in. So yes, when, we can set that ahead of time. You can know what date that is.
So I'm just, I'm wanting the board to understand their options, which is, the first one is, they would have enough lead time to schedule a special meeting on the bid opening day. So that you would be in a position to advise them with regard to what makes sense and what doesn't make sense. And all the trustees could have input on that. The other option is to, to, I'm sorry, Susan, what?
I just want to add that typically, that meeting is at noon. Like Glenn gets the bids at noon, and then sometimes he asks for refreshed pricing by two. So evening meeting isn't helpful, but-
No, no, I, I understand that.
Yes, I just want to clarify that. Sorry.
That's a good point, but that is a good point to make, that any special meeting that was gonna handle it in that fashion would have to be a daytime meeting. The other option is to set some parameters for the decision maker. So that's, that's really the board's decision point tonight is whether they want to try to, the board wants to try to schedule a special meeting during the day when, when they learn when the bids are gonna be back, or whether we ought to set parameters tonight.
Jeff, I kind of like both of those ideas. So one of them, the, the reason why I think a special meeting is so important is because we've never done this before. And this is, this is new to us, and the, the thought that we would kick it around is, is I think a good idea. If this was the 10th time we've done this, then I don't think we need a special meeting. But I also like the idea of giving parameters just in case we, we can't get everybody together, we get a really good bid, we might as well capitalize on it. And, and those parameters would be something like if it's more than X percent savings over a 12-month or a 24-month, we would permit Bob to say yes to it.
In the event that you could not schedule a special meeting?
Right. So we kind of have a-
We don't, we don't know when this is gonna fall, and it might be hard to get everybody, or at least get a forum together.
So I think that would be an appropriate motion. Set your parameters that Bob will be able to accept i- in the event the board cannot schedule a special meeting for the bid opening day.
Would someone like to make a motion?
I'll make, and do we, do we make that with parameters?
Yes.
Okay. What, what do you guys think are appropriate parameters? Last time, last time it came in, it was right about 3% below the market rate. It was 3% below the, was it the 12 or the 12? It was 3% below the 12-month average.
Oh, no.
Would you guys feel comfortable? So just so we know, guys, the, the one-year increase on Argenee pricing, the 12-month, is it a 23% increase? The last time we calculated, it was like a month ago.
Sue, what is Aranda Coy doing? What are their parameters?
Well, Aranda Coy wanted to switch to the 24-month, and they waited long to respond, which is why they don't have a program right now.
I see.
The ESCO withdrew the pricing the next day. So they're waiting, they're open to the 24-month. They really, yeah, they really, they really are open to the 24-month at this point, you know.
And Brighton has taken the 24-month, right?
They have. Yep. So at this point, Brighton's the only Monroe community moving forward with the CCA. But Aranda Coy's waiting, and I, I think the town wants a programs, but again, they haven't shifted yet to the 24-month discussion.
Is the thought that any savings is, is enough of a trigger? Even if it's 1.3, is that anything that was lower than the, than the Argenee rate would be acceptable? Or you don't want to look at it that way?
The other advantage is, is it freezes the price for the term of the contract.
Right.
Right, the 24 months. Is that right? 24 months, okay.
So it, it is an advantage. So I don't see a real downside to it. It's very- Go ahead, Dan.
Sorry, Bob. I'm sorry, Bob. Finish your thought.
No, no, I was, I was done anyway, so.
The only downside, Lily, in theory, I'm with you. The problem there is you leave no wiggle room for prices to go down. So if prices go down even a little bit, you're now paying more than you were, which, which would be a really bad scenario. So I'd be more comfortable with, I don't know, 3%. If it's more than 3% savings over a 12- or 24-month trend, and it's 100% renewable. In a perfect world, it's New York State 100% renewable, but I'd accept anything. What do you guys think?
Okay, that sounds acceptable then. 3%?
I, I, I made up that number. If somebody has a, a better idea, I'm willing to hear it.
Well, I, I think the benchmark, I mean, Brighton's already done this. What did they end up with?
They ended up with 4.29 cents per kilowatt hour.
Okay, okay.
Which was, you know, a 25% savings over the retail, same product, and it's, you know, just below the 24-month benchmark, like a fraction below. And just remember, like, any one month, Argenee could be higher or lower than the rate that you pick, right?
Yeah, which is why the six-month and 12-month trends that we looked at the last time were so important. And we are seeing very clear indications that they're going up.
Exactly, exactly.
Okay, so would someone like to make a motion? Do, do you want to propose a motion, Dan?
Yeah, so I'll, I'll make a motion that we grant Bob permission to accept a CCA bid that is 3% or greater over at least a one-year average. Let's put it that way. So a one-year average or more, and is 100% renewable.
And in the event, un- unless the board is able to schedule a special meeting for the bid opening day?
Correct.
Dan, sorry.
Go ahead, Sue.
Yeah, could I ask a clarifying question? Because I think you said at least a 3% savings over the last 12 months?
Over the 12-month average.
And we weren't able to beat the 12-month average at, at all. Which is why we switched to the 24-month average. Because the steer was, right, so do you mean the 24-month?
Yeah, Dan, I think Dan's motion was at least a 12-month average. So that leaves it open for 24. No, I think Dan said no less than a 20, no less than a 12-month average.
Right. So it could be more.
Could be more.
Okay.
Does that, does that answer your question, Susan?
I think so. I think I wasn't hearing that quite right.
You know what, though? Let's, let's put a cap on it at 12 to 24 months. How's that?
Okay.
I, I think that's good, because you, you wouldn't want to go back more than 24 months. And the way I had said that before, it would have, it would have been more than 24.
Okay.
So, Dorothea, do, do you want to read that back?
Not really, but-
Want me to do it again?
Well, let me see if, what I have here. We kind of jumbled around there. I have to grant Mayor Corby the right to approve a bid of 3% less than a, than, no, yeah, guys lost me. No-
3% savings over an average somewhere between 12 and 24 months. And 100% renewable.
Unless, unless the board is able to schedule a special meeting for the bid opening day.
That I have.
And, and Bob, preferably New York State. Because of what we went over the last time, like, it's gonna be cleaner in the bill, in, in your bill that you get each month, it's gonna say, yeah. And, you know, we're also supporting our local economy, which is good. I don't think that has to be in the motion, though, Dorothea, the New York State stuff.
Sure.
Well, great. That sounds good.
We still need a second.
Second.
Roll call. Trustee Keating.
Keating, aye.
Trustee Galusha.
Trustee Galusha, aye.
Trustee Lampier.
Lampier, aye.
Trustee Stetzer.
Stetzer, aye.
Mayor Corby.
Corby, aye.
Motion passes.
Well, great. Exciting.
Thank you, Sue.
Thank you, Sue.
Thank you.
You're quite welcome. Did you want me to address what little information I've collected on Community Solar?
If you have some new information, sure.
Just to let you know that we have hunted down and now have the location of the four solar fields that could be possibly used. And now we will research the issue of prime farmland. They're all in neighborhoods with houses and businesses nearby, but we'll, we'll explore that a little further. That was the solar developers' language. So it just took us till this evening to get that specific detail, and we'll sort it out. So I'll get back to you.
Thank you, Sue.
You're welcome. My pleasure. Thank you all very, very much. See you another day.
Thanks, Sue. Go get us some savings. Go get us some green energy at a low price.
Sounds good. Sounds good. All right.
All right.
I know.
Thanks.
Thanks, Sue.
Okay, getting back to the agenda, let's go back to minutes.
I have a correction for the August 11th minutes. Is that the first set? Yeah, it is. August 11th, page 7. Scroll down. There's a, there's an extra T in there, where in the second to last paragraph, where it says Steve questioned the board. It's a, it's a little tiny thing, that Steve questioned the board as to T, how to assist the applicant. Just need to take it out. And then I have page 13. Second sentence. Where is it? Second sentence, the speed limit legislation is, we just need to take out it.
Good suggestion.
Those are just, they're not changing the intent or anything. They're just grammatical, or errors. A lot of words to type.
Really? Didn't notice.
Okay, would someone like to make a motion to approve the minutes from August 11th?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for August 11th.
Thank you, Renee. I'll second that. All in favor?
Roll call. Trustee Galusha.
Trustee Galusha, aye.
Trustee Keating.
Keating, aye.
Trustee Lampier.
Lampier, aye.
Trustee Stetzer.
Stetzer, aye.
Mayor Corby.
Corby, aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, next meeting is August 14th. Do you have any corrections?
This was August 24th.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, you are, you are correct. August 24th.
I do. We need to, throughout the minutes, the use of speeds, it should be century, S-E-N-T-R-Y. Not speed century.
A century.
We want to end the speed century.
Right. It was a little Freudian slip. Just a quick find and replace, because there are a bunch of them in there.
Yep, it probably picked it up on word correct.
Yeah, that's fine. That's all I noticed.
Would someone like to make a motion to approve the minutes from August 24th?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes. On August 24th.
I'll second.
Bob, you can.
Bob, you were-
Oh, I wasn't there. You're right.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay. Um, Trustee Keating.
Keating, aye.
Trustee Lampier.
Lampier, aye.
Trustee Stetzer.
Stetzer, aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, next we have September 3rd.
This is the joint meeting with the planning board, so.
Yep.
I have no changes.
Thank you.
Okay. Motion to approve meetings, minutes from September 3rd. Could I have a second?
I'll second, Stetser.
Do we have another vote?
Yep, trustee Galusha.
Trustee Galusha, aye.
Trustee Keating.
I'm going to abstain. I was not at that one. I'm not sure Frank was either. Oh, no, Frank was.
No, I was there.
Yeah, you were there. It was me who wasn't there. So I'm going to abstain.
Sorry about that. Trustee Lampier.
Lampier, aye.
Trustee Stetser.
Stetser, aye.
Mayor Corby.
Corby, aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Do you want to do the clerk's report or you want to go ahead and do the local law?
Well, let's see. Let's go ahead. We'll come back to the clerk's report. Let's go ahead and do the local law.
This is just the correction to the code?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Any discussion? If not, would someone like to make?
We need to open the public hearing.
Open the public hearing. I'll make a motion to open the public hearing. Do I have a second?
Stetser, second.
Trustee Galusha.
Trustee Galusha, aye.
Trustee Keating.
Keating, aye.
Trustee Lampier.
Lampier, aye.
Trustee Stetser.
Stetser, aye.
Mayor Corby.
Corby, aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, would anyone like to talk about this change to the village code, a correction?
This is just a correction. We came across it and noticed that the code said that riding your bicycle between the Monroe Avenue Bridge and the State Street Bridge was, was prohibited. And in reality, I mean, we're already doing this in practice, but it's supposed to be between the Monroe Avenue Bridge. I mean, state or, oh my gosh, the Main Street Bridge and State Street Bridge. And dismount, all the signs already say that you're supposed to dismount if you're on the canal path. Or if you want to continue riding, you go on the, the street on Shane Place. So this is just, this is already in practice. We're not changing anything. We're not already doing, we just noticed there was a mistake in the code. That would be a long way to, yes, it's an error. So we're just correcting it.
Okay, if there is no discussion, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing. Do I have a second?
Second. Did you ask for any public input, Paul? Okay.
Would anyone like to comment on this proposed change to our code? Well, there's some stat.
Well, yes, it was Justin, but I'm not sure if he wanted to speak. I don't have any comments in the bubble at this time.
Okay, so I am going to make a motion to close the public hearing.
Trustee Galusha.
Okay, trustee Lampier got that one. So the roll call, trustee Galusha.
Trustee Galusha, aye.
Trustee Keating.
Keating, aye.
Trustee Lampier.
Lampier, aye.
Trustee Stetser.
Stetser, aye.
Mayor Corby.
Corby, aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, going back to the agenda, let's go to the non-municipal application.
Sorry, Bob, we need a motion to adopt if we're going to move forward.
Oh, that's right. Yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah.
Okay.
Rushing ahead. I'll make a motion to adopt the amendment to the code. Do I have a second?
Stetser, second.
Dorothy, have a vote, please.
Trustee Galusha.
Trustee Galusha, aye.
Trustee Keating.
Keating, aye.
Trustee Lampier.
Lampier, aye.
Trustee Stetser.
Stetser, aye.
Mayor Corby.
Corby, aye.
Motion passes.
Okay. Next item is the special permit applicant, or excuse me, the non-municipal application for candlelight night from the Pittsburgh Chamber of Commerce.
Dorothy, are you presenting?
I can.
It's, it's a scaled down version of events. They have decided not to close Main Street. They're not having food trucks. Understanding the so- social distancing limitations. So there, there will be a tree lighting at the four corners, another one on Shane Place. They will have carolers at the tree lighting. And I think that's about it.
So no security will be, not going to hire security or anything like that?
None at all. Nope, it's just really the tree lightings and I don't believe they're really going to advertise it as strongly as they've done in the past. I think they're trying to keep it very low key.
And do we need to waive the 45 day waiting period?
What I'm thinking in my head, yes, we will need to waive that.
And so there's no plan to, oh, go ahead, Lily.
No, go ahead. You have a question.
So no plan to shut down any roads at all. So we're, I mean, this is always a great opportunity to underscore that we live in a community, not just a highway. So, but, and people are working from home, so the impact on traffic would be less.
There is, I, as my understanding, the Candlelight Committee is, having served on that committee, they haven't even really met this year because they're just hasn't, with the opportunity. And they just feel that moving forward to keep it just to the tree lightings this year is my understanding with talking to Karen. And we're hoping to, next year will be a great year, move forward. But I think they wanted to do something instead of nothing.
Okay, so we're going to have traffic whizzing by at 40 miles per hour as we're lighting the tree, which isn't a very community supported, it just.
Well, to shut the roads down, we're going to need the DPW. We're going to need, usually the Candlelight Committee has a staff to assist with doing that. And I think trying to get that many people together to actually do it, and we need assistance from the town. Zach, if you want to go over what's required to do that.
I'd like to make a comment. Renee, I think the reason why they moved it to the Friday night after Thanksgiving in part was they were hoping that the traffic wouldn't be as bad as it is normally on a normal commuter night.
Okay, I still think we're missing an opportunity to underscore that we live in a community and not a highway. But I understand all the, I know all the logistics, so. And if it's too late for them to do all that, I just, I would love to give them support if they wanted to do that.
Okay, I would, I would like to make a motion that we approve the non-municipal use permit for the Chamber of Commerce to hold Candlelight Night on November, Friday, November the 28th, 2021, with also a waiver waiving the 45 day requirement.
I'm just going to correct Lily's motion to November 27th, 2020.
Thanks. I don't know about this, guys. I, I guess somebody seconded and then we can talk more about it.
Go ahead, Dan.
I, I, I want to underscore what Renee said. I'm, I love all things Candlelight Night. I think everybody on this call does. And I'm very worried about safety. And, you know, people are going to hear the words Candlelight Night and it could draw a big crowd, draws a big crowd every year. Well, and we're, so.
It's kind of hard for us to answer because it's, and we can't, I mean, we can't decide the parameters of the.
Parameters for the group. I, I agree with what both Dan and Renee have said. But it, you know, we're just, we don't tell people how to hold their events. Well, I would, I guess I would correct that a little bit.
Yeah.
I mean, we, we, that's the purpose of the non-municipal use permit. If, if the board wanted to impose some additional safety precautions, it could presumably do that. But whether or not you want to dictate to the group how they do it is also a consideration.
If I can just note to the board, we cut our budget for Candlelight Night to the bone this year, and we typically have paid for the security in the past. So that would be a factor, as well as I need 30 days to notify the DOT for the road closing. And tonight would be 30 days. And I'll be honest, I have sent that in two to three months and had to wait to the day before the night to get the permit to close that road. That's giving that Zach would also have to try to schedule his crew. I just want to let you know the troubles we have at closing the road at this late juncture.
Were we talking about closing the road? Are we talking about having, having security at the crosswalks?
I'm just, understand the traffic concerns and, you know, those are a couple of factors that will play. I don't know if the group, they normally fundraise by selling.
Yes, and they haven't done that, so.
Right, right.
So I don't know how they could pay for the security even, because typically we pay for that. And we're not going to be able to pay for it because we didn't budget for it.
Right. So Steve has a question.
I really think they're trying to downplay it this year, understanding that they don't want crowds of people on the sidewalk. So I think, you know, that they've had for the last three months, the chamber has been discussing this. And, and I think they've come, you know, a scaled back thing. It's not optimal. We all realize that, but I think it's, it's a reasonable approach, given the conditions that we're facing.
The other thing I'm having a big challenge with is that we're really just hearing about this now. So we, we, if they've been discussing it for three months, we had some time to give input and we haven't. This is the first that at least four of us are hearing about it.
Go ahead, Steve.
Yeah, logistically, this is going to be a whole different field. I mean, when, when people came to Candlelight before, you had food trucks, you had the streets closed. People kind of expected to be out in the road and, and things like that. When, when people come in, if they do come in for this, they're going to see a totally different atmosphere. It's not like they're going to be out walking in the middle of Main Street. I mean, you just had, when you had a couple of protest groups in town, there were hundreds of people on the sidewalks on both sides. I'd, I'd say the one night. And it really didn't cause a, a problem traffic wise. I, I mean, I mean, Zach could probably, you know, be on call or figure out something maybe to, to call this, but I, you know, I think once people come, they're going to see that it's not the same type of event. And I don't think you're going to have the same issue with traffic you would have in a year when we don't have COVID. I don't think as many people are even going to come out because of, of the whole pandemic and the situation we have. But that's just my opinion.
Steve, the only thing I want to push back on, the only thing I want to push back on is that, and I agree with most of what you said. You can't compare the protests that happened in the village to this. The, one of them was on a Saturday morning during COVID when there was no, it was light out. This is, this is a nighttime thing that draws thousands of people. So it's, it's a little bit apples and oranges. And the, the other one that was on both sides of the street, on the sidewalks for cops, there was no more than 100 people at that thing, maybe 120, 150. Candlelight Night typically in a non-COVID year has drawn thousands of people.
Zach had his hand up.
Yeah, Zach.
I, I just wanted to say that the road closure was due to the fact that so many people were showing up in the past before the road was closed, that it became kind of a mandate because of, for, for safety reasons, including Monroe County Sheriff's, state troopers at all the crosswalks because of all the people cutting through there. When it's dark out, it's wet out, it becomes a safety issue, regardless of the road closed or not. So and you can't really anticipate how many people are going to be there until it happens. If it's a nice night, a lot of people are going to end up showing up. I know you don't have the, the same, the food trucks and the entertainment and stuff, but there's still going to be some people that are going to show up just for something to do.
Yeah, so I'm just worried about people, people crossing there. The road's not closed. It's a, there are a lot of families, there are a lot of teenagers, there are a lot of kids who typically come out again. What, what you're saying, Zach, is, is spot on. If it's a crappy night and it's cold and sleety, as it sometimes is, you know, we, we won't know until that night. And I know we don't have the budget and I know this isn't our event to, to dictate whether the road closes, but maybe we can think through some things we could do to anticipate any safety concerns, particularly the crossings at, at Shane Place to, are, are there still going to be things going on at, on Shane Place that evening too? Nothing at all? Because that's okay.
Nothing.
Your standing is there's nothing but the tree lightings. I could be wrong.
So, you know, people naturally will probably migrate there. But, so the four corners, I guess, is our biggest concern then, people crossing there.
Well, then we would have to amend our, the motion to require that the Chamber of Commerce provide crossing guards at the four corners in the Village of Pittsburgh. We would have to specify what we are requiring as part of the non-municipal use permit.
I don't, I don't think any of that could happen without the approval from the DOT, which requires permits. Including a road closure, if that many people did show up, there's no way that we could just shut down the state roads.
Yeah, we can't shut down. I, I wasn't even saying that we would have crossing guards that would stop traffic. I just want to, when, when the pedestrians have the right of way, just make sure somebody turning right doesn't plow into a, a group of kids or, or something. That's all. So it would, it would be minimal. You know, minimal presence, but, so I don't know how we do this or if it's, it, it's even doable. I just do have concerns on a regular night, let alone when there are a, a ton of people out.
Well, that's what I just said. I, what I was suggesting is that we make a, a requirement as part of our approval of the non-municipal use permit that the Chamber of Commerce provide crossing guards at the four corners.
Right, so.
Closing the roads or anything.
Right.
It just means people would flashlights at the four corners, helping people across the street.
Yeah, just to make sure that the driver sees them.
If you want to require them to do that.
I, I very much agree with that. Thank you, Lily.
Yeah.
What's the status of the insurance, Dorothea?
I haven't received anything from Karen. I don't think she was thinking about it yet. So I will have to reach out to her because I'm going to have to let her know about the crossing guards. And she's going to have to reach out to a professional service for that.
Yeah, I know. When we, when we did that for, for Bike to School Day, it cost us some money. So it may be money they don't have. So that's why I wanted to, I mean, I don't know what we do here.
They could use volunteers.
But they won't allow, you're not allowed to put volunteers out that are, aren't trained. So they have to be professionals or they have to be trained crossing guards.
Yeah. Yeah, I think they have to have a, they have to go through training and be specific. That's why.
You can't just put volunteers out as we learned.
For the security. So that's something we'll just have to throw at them. If they can do it, great. I mean, we have another meeting before the proposed night. We could bring it back. I don't know what the board wants to do.
Yeah, I hesitate making it a requirement because if it ends up costing them $1,000, they may not be able to do it. So that's why I was wondering what, maybe we should put things out, cones and things on the sidewalk. Those will get knocked over. I'm just trying to think how they can still have their event without it costing them a lot of money, unless, sometimes the town will donate a crossing guard.
Yeah, I'm not sure what portion of the town's jumping in. Like I said, I haven't been to any of the candle, there hasn't been a Candlelight Night meeting, at least I was informed of that I've been to. So I have no idea of the whole scope.
I, I just want to add to this that I may have issues with getting people in here. If we have any work to do around here, just given that it is a holiday for us. So no one's scheduled to be in on Friday. So setting up, I don't, I don't know. I, I can ask if necessary, but I can't guarantee anybody.
Is it enough if we just piggybacking on what, what Lily suggested, which are really, like, that's a great idea. Our only concern is that it probably. Our only concern is that it probably will cost them a lot of money that they may not have in their budget. Can we make a suggestion?
Yeah.
Um, I mean, it is a Friday night right after Thanksgiving, so maybe the traffic won't be be as bad as we anticipate.
I think it's either got to be a condition or not a condition.
Shoot, okay.
Um, you have a request from Alisa Plummer to speak. I don't know if the board would like to let her.
Sure.
Of course.
Oh, hello?
Hello.
Hello, you're you're online.
Oh, okay, you know, I I think, um, you know, really good points are raised about safety because everybody's right. It was such a, it's always such a big event with thousands of people. So even if ten percent come out, that's still a number, you know, that's a hefty amount of people. So I'm I'm thinking with crossing guards, why wouldn't um, the chamber maybe reach out to the Pittsburgh Central School District to train school crossing guards to see if we can get some volunteers?
We could certainly suggest that, Alisa.
I mean, that way, no one's out any money. You have volunteers. It's a community effort.
Yes, I agree. Just to laugh, I agree.
Good suggestion.
Okay, well, I'm going to mute myself. Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
So how does the board feel about making an amendment to the, to the um, the municipal use permit?
We lost you there.
To add on a condition that they provide a a cross, two crossing guards? Or do you want to make it one at four corners?
I think we'd be okay to just um, inform them that we have concerns about the safety at the four corners and strongly suggest that they have uh, some personnel there qualified to assist people safely cross the street.
I I'm with, I'm with Jeff on that, though. I a a suggestion isn't enough. I I think this is either how we vote or not.
So you would like the motion to read uh, that there's a condition that they provide a crossing guard, a trained crossing guard at the four corners to aid pedestrians?
Yes.
Do you want to make it two?
And and I would suggest that we ask for the usual liability insurance.
Yep. That we need anyway.
Yes. So that is the motion.
I will, I will second that. So we're saying one, correct, Lily, and we're not requiring that they're two?
Uh, Steve thinks that we should have two, one that's.
I I don't think it would be better if we had two, however, I do, if I recall correctly from doing Bike to School Day, they have to be trained crossing guards that have been through that. That may be because it was a school related um, um, event. So maybe there are different standards for this, but if we say a minimum of of one, at least we may not.
If if you're truly concerned about safety here, one's not going to be enough to cover four corners with groups of people. You're going to be, you're going to be asking an awful lot of one person to control four corners, four crossing. I think you got to have a minimum of two and optimally, you would have one for each corner. Yes, because.
Okay.
If if you have a bunch of people and you're you're really worried about it, you need to make sure you're completely safe then.
I am worried about it.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor. The condition is that the chamber provide two crossing guards and their um, liability insurance form. That's the motion on the floor.
I will second that.
Do we have a vote?
Trustee Kitty.
Keating, aye.
Trustee Lanfear.
Lanfear, aye.
Trustee Galusha.
Trustee Galusha, aye.
Trustee Stetzer.
Stetzer, aye.
Mayor Corby.
Corby, aye.
Motion passes.
Can the liaisons for the uh, chamber, either um, Mayor Corby or or Dan, reach out to them and let them know if they need any help with this?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Renee, to correct you, I'm no longer the liaison to the.
Okay, so. So Mayor Corby, then, can you?
Yeah.
Reach out in case it is an onerous thing, we would love to assist.
Will do.
And Bob, you know, if they've been talking about this for three months and we heard about it now, maybe you could get us some of that information a little sooner as the liaison.
Uh, they just released their statement about, I don't know, two weeks ago, damn.
I'm just going off of what.
Moving on.
Just going by what you said, you said they were talking about it for three months, so maybe you could get us more information sooner.
Dan, we're not going down that rabbit hole tonight. Just just.
Down a rabbit hole. I've said what I needed to say. Thank you.
Yeah, and it's it's a distraction and you've repeatedly done that in meetings and we're going to try to stay on the topics so we don't take any longer than we need to.
Got it.
All right, next item. Uh, we have a special permit application uh, for the Habad Lubavitch menorah lighting.
Is it menorah lighting or is it for the school?
Oh, you're right, it's for the school. Thank you. I was thinking menorah. And incidentally, they haven't applied yet for the non municipal use permit, which they probably need to do.
Probably do.
Yeah.
They might be deciding as well what they're going to do.
Are they here?
Is that, is anyone here from Habad Lubavitch? Hmm.
Okay.
Okay, I don't know what to tell you about that one.
I'm not. Steve, do you know who was supposed to be speaking?
Did we lose Steve?
I would have, I would have thought the rabbi, did did somebody notify the rabbi from the that they were on the, or to give him a link for the meeting tonight?
No, I did not. I did not notify the rabbi. I thought he was aware and I did not notify.
You know what they're proposing?
Yes, um, what what they want to do, they they'd come in asking to operate a daycare. Um, and I talked to um, Justin in regards to this and tried, you know, we looked at using a um, a variance, a zoning variance, and it is very, very onerous to try and obtain. So in talking uh, with the rabbi, it is just typically, they have children there now. They want, they want to run a small daycare for five members' children. They run classes. Um, there instruct, there'll be instruction for these children all within the school itself. They're going to have to get a state permit in order to do this also. Um, so the thought was to go through as a special permit to allow them to to uh, run a, you know, have these children there, run a pseudo uh, small daycare. And like you said, just for church members, and it'll also be instruction, which I talked to, Jeff and I have talked in regards to this. I I don't know what else to say because the gentleman's not here, so I I really can't speak a lot for him, him. But that is the basic crux of it, and we thought that the special permit would be the uh, option for them to be able to possibly do this. So Steve and I talked about this. If this was not solely for the members of that church, it would be a problem. If they just wanted to open a daycare like the Presbyterian Church allows on their site, that would be a problem, but since it's an adjunct to their religious use, I think the board can do it by special permit. But only, only if it's going to be for the members of that church group.
And they do note in their application that it's for the congregation membership, so they do note that, Jeff.
Yeah, I noticed, yeah, but I, what my point is, I would think that we would, if we get to the point of having a a hearing and granting this, we would want to make that a condition.
Yeah.
Right, right.
Um, I also, the the other condition would be that it that they'd stay to the number within their application. But between, you know, five to fourteen children sounds okay, but more than that would be a problem. Do we need to talk to the neighbors about this? I didn't see anything in here that said.
I think you have to, I think you would have to ask the neighbors and 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 offer their opinion on this because they could be affected by this.
Well, this would be a public hearing. This is going to be, this would be a public hearing.
Hearing, so they would have an opportunity to comment. Dorothea, were you waving your hand?
I actually did reach uh, Mr. Heine. He's going to jump in. He anticipates getting here closer to nine. So I know we have other items on our agenda. I told him most likely we will still be here, so if that's okay with the board.
That's fine.
So if you want to hold off and continue on with the next item.
Before we go on to the next item, can I ask, Steve, did you charge them the two hundred and fifty dollars? Or or do we waive this fee for a church group?
Uh, that that's totally up to you. I didn't, I did not take the fee for the planning. You know, when he first came in, he put a a a proof, uh, application to the planning board, and then we realized that that was going to probably not fly. So I believe we have his, you know, check for him, but it has not been applied. And I didn't know how the board felt about it because it is a religious organization.
Um, if I could jump in real quick, you can't waive that. You have to treat all applicants the same, whether they're religious, handicapped, anything, unless it's in your code to do differently.
Okay.
Okay.
I did like the sentiment, though. Thank you.
Um, one question before Rabbi arrives. Are they differentiating? Is there a differentiation in our, in the zoning, in the R2 between uh, school and daycare? So if it's a school, does that affect the uh, the um, special use permit?
I I don't, I don't think it's a, it is not a permitted use. A school is not a permitted use. The only way this would be permitted is if it's a uh, an adjunct to their operation as a religious organization.
An accessory use.
So, thank you, Bob. That's exactly right, but it's it's got to be clear, it's got, but it's got to be clearly religious in nature. It can't. So that's why it's got to be limited to the members of the congregation. And if they're doing religious education, that's also a plus.
Well, that's what I, that's that's where I was going with it, that it would be a school and the children are being educated to the Habad. So that's, that's where, rather than just a daycare where they're just being looked after.
Well, if if it, if they're just being looked after because they're part of the religious congregation, that says to me that it is part of their religious use.
Okay, so either way, it's this, it's all the same. It doesn't differentiate. Okay.
I would, I think, I think the board should focus on the religious use and granting any modification of that permit.
Right.
Okay.
And if you also, if you look, I I'm, don't know if it went in the package, but I believe Dorothea got everything. They actually have a special permit, but that was issued by the planning board for the religious use of the office.
And there are comments from the neighbors at the time in there as well.
Yes.
At that time, I was on the board at that time, the planning board, and so I do remember the application. And there was, there was input from some of the neighbors uh, at that time. So I think, of course, in the public hearing, that there would, it would be as well. Because this, this involves drop off and pickup. And so there's going to be a little bit of more traffic involved, and they should be aware of that.
Right, and it's so, you know, they have, their screening is all uh, in place in there. They already have a a line of bushes down the side yard between them and the neighbors. They got the very large barn on the backside, so they're not affecting any, you know, the children, you know, especially only five children, aren't going to really affect any of the neighbors um, there. But as you said, there was, I did note a negative comment from a neighbor initially on the special permit application, but the majority of them were positive towards the use of it as a religious organization.
So this was for information only this evening, is that correct?
Correct, correct.
No, no, it's not. They put in a legal application. Wasn't it?
This is, this is information only. The board would have to set the public hearing time.
Yeah, you saw it, you were public hearing, yes.
This is just the first round. Um, did you want to move on to Aladdin's? If that's.
Sure.
I see, it looks like it's a John Crawford, and I see John in. So John, are you here?
There's a John that is muted.
Yeah, there are three Johns that are muted.
Three Johns, yeah.
And I don't see anybody connected to audio or on.
Well, they're all connected to audio.
No, they're.
No, they're offline.
They're all offline.
Yeah.
And you, what is he proposing, Steve?
It it's in the packet. Um, he's, they're proposing to have a commissary kitchen at eight. Um, what I was confused about was it looks like it's across the street.
Across the alley at number nine.
Yeah, so one of them was an even number and one was an odd number, so what does that mean? I don't know what that means.
It means it's across the alley.
Number nine, number nine is actually the coal tower. Number eight is the existing Aladdin's restaurant. So if they're going to be, if they're going to be preparing food at the coal tower, they're going to have to cross the street. At least that's what it looks to me.
Yeah, that's, that's what it looked like to me. I didn't read it as the actual coal tower, but I guess it is, huh?
No, no, it's the old Simply Clay building.
Now it's the, yes, it's upstairs where the hairdresser used to be.
Number nine, number nine, number nine is the old cold, is the coal tower.
Excuse me, excuse me. It is to the left of Simply Crepes on the bottom floor where the Simply Clay place used to be. It's on the far left of the building. It's Simply Crepes in.
Yeah.
It's the space over, it's the space over the top of Simply Crepes, other uh, lower floor establishment.
It's where the pottery place used to be underneath.
Yeah, right. Mostly from that little gabled entrance on the end of the barn.
John's back.
Oh, hi, John. Hello?
Uh, can you hear me now?
Yep, we hear you.
Okay, how are you doing tonight?
Hi, John.
Hi, John. Would you like to tell us what you're planning for with the commissary at Eight Shane Place?
Yeah, across the street where Mostly Clay was, I'm looking to do a little commissary kitchen. Basically have a a a small little area where I'll do some little cooking. And I have a walk-in cooler, walk-in freezer, and I also have storage for like wine and and all my paper products and that kind of stuff.
And this is for.
Can you say that again?
Yeah, we we can hear you again.
Okay.
So you're in the basement?
Uh, no, I'm looking at doing the, where Mostly Clay, where Mostly Clay is.
Right, okay. Right, okay. So you're what we call street front.
Okay.
This, there's a window, right, in that, in that old space?
Yeah, yep.
Okay. Could you speak to how you plan to bring the food from one location to the other?
Sure, I, I, I put my van up to, uh, right up to the front of this, the front of the, the front door. And I would load my van and then just, just drive it over to, uh, and then I'd back into like my back, uh, by the canal, my back entrance there.
Okay. Is, is that a requirement from the health department?
No, I, I, I could use a cart if I wanted to and just put it on, you know, four or five buckets onto a cart and roll it over as well.
Okay.
Is this a permitted use, Steve?
As far as the zoning, yes.
And how would you handle the trash, uh, John? Where, where would you keep that? At Aladdin's or how, how would you deal with that?
No, I would take it to the dumpsters. Just, I would, I would, it's, it's all community use, uh, Simply Crepes, Coal Tower, myself, sure, the dumpster. So we would, I would just be part of that.
I see. So same, same system you use right now?
Correct.
Okay. And how many people would work here?
About four people. The staff that I have now is four people. It'd basically be, uh, three days a week, Monday, Wednesday, Friday from, uh, seven o'clock. They're usually done by noon at the latest.
And how often would the van be there to pick things up? And I'm asking just in terms of the safety of, you know, having a constant van on Shane Place, because it's a narrow street.
Oh, just, I, I, like, right now on Monday, Wednesday, Friday, where I'm currently doing it, I make two trips. Um, in the winter time, it's, it's one trip on Monday and Friday. I, I just go to two days a week, you know, basically from now on till, uh, till the middle of April. Uh, in the middle of April, you know, depending on the volume of business, you know?
I see. So it's, it's sort of a, a once a day thing?
Exactly. Yeah, we, once a day, three, three times, you know, three times a week during the summer time and then, uh, in the winter time, Mondays and Fridays.
I see, okay. Other questions?
I have a question. Sorry, I have a question for Steve.
Go ahead.
Okay, um, Steve, as far as fire code is, uh, concerned regarding the kitchen being placed into that building, it's a multi-use building, is it not?
That, actually, no. If, if you look at the code and you look at separation, fire separation, the, the restaurant to restaurant does not require a firewall or fire separation.
Okay, so as far as the venting and so forth, uh, is there any accommodations to the outside of that building that will have to be accomplished before the kitchen is, can be installed? There is. And will that require APRB?
No, I don't, it depends. I have not seen plans yet to, as far as where the hood will go. He is going to have to have a suppression system and a hood and, and everything necessary to run the kitchen. And when, when those plans come in and, and it, I see a visual, will, more than likely, they would, if they come through roof or have any kind of, uh, a physical change to the exterior, they will have to be presented to the HPPB.
Is the same thing, Hall Two, for any grease trap requirements?
That's a good question for John, how that will be handled.
Yeah, there'll be a small little grease trap, um, it'll be underneath the triple bay sink.
And where does it, where is the trap located outside of the building?
No, it's, it's, it's inside. It goes right underneath the, uh, the triple bay sink. And it'll just, it's a small little grease trap. It's just for like the washing of, of like that.
I see. All right. Thank you.
The architect knows about that and it, it will be, it's, it will be addressed, yes.
Okay. Okay, so we will, uh, will require a public hearing, will we not, Dorothea?
Dorothea? Do we have to vote to take this to public hearing?
Yes.
What would be the date of the public hearing, Dorothea?
Can't hear you, Dorothea.
Dorothea? We can't hear you.
I'm sorry, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, not sure what happened. Um, yes, this will require a public hearing. I would say the first, the next village board meeting in November tenth is going to be, um, too soon. So I would say it'd be December eighth.
Okay, I'll make a motion to schedule a public hearing for the special use permit of the Aladdin's commissary on December eighth. Could I have a second?
I'll second it.
Back to your second.
What time?
We'll go with the seven, seven fifteen.
Let's do seven PM.
Okay.
Okay, Dorothea, would you ask for a vote?
Absolutely. Trustee Lanfair.
Lanfair, aye.
Trustee Stetser.
Stetser, aye.
Trustee Keating.
Keating, aye.
Mayor Corby.
Corby, aye.
And trustee Galusha.
Trustee Galusha, aye.
Motion passes.
Hey, John, before we lose you, just so you know, um, you may already know this, you may not know this. Um, we're, we're bound by the code that we have to do a public hearing of base use and, and we have to give notice and it, and it takes a while because you actually have to give public notice and you have to like let old newspapers know and that kind of thing. So believe me, we'd love to fast track this or to, to help you with your business and help it be quick, but the, the law says that we have to follow this process. And so that's what this is about. Um, so I just wanted to make sure you understood that.
Okay, no, I understand. That's fine.
Yeah.
Will you guys let me know what, what you're looking for for me, um, so I have everything ready for you? Is there anything that?
I guess the building inspector would let you know, right, Steve? Yeah, Steve will, the, the building inspector will let you know everything that we will want to be looking at that evening.
Great, thank you very much.
Sure, thank you, John.
Have a great night.
A lot of Jans here tonight.
I know, three, four times.
Okay. Did we vote on the motion to go to public hearing yet?
Yes, we did that.
Okay. Next item. Um, we have resident comments from the, the speed forum.
Bob, do you, do you want me to hang around for this?
No.
I think that was a no.
All right, my dog is misbehaving.
Okay, um, Dorothea, will you allow me to share my screen and then I can just put the document up? And we can just kind of go off of that?
Just, just, Bob, did you want me to hang around for this or not?
No, I think that's, you're good to go.
Okay, well, just remember the Habad, it's a religious use when he comes back.
Good, thank you, good night.
Good night.
Thanks, Jeff.
Jeff, good night.
Dan, that should have done it.
Okay, there we go. So I'll just share the, um, the document that we have here. Where is it? Okay, it's this guy. This was from the last time. So let's just go over the open one. Some of these are already done. Yeah, hold on, I just have to move some things around on the window. Okay, uh, Bob was gonna work with the town on establishing transition zones. This was updated on ten thirteen. Bill Smith is on board raising it to DOT. Um, I, I, that was a long-term one. That wasn't sort of immediate action. Walk by Pittsburgh was going to do a post on the sorry? So, uh, Walk by Pittsburgh was going to do a post on the changes to the crosswalk during Dunn, being done during bridge reconstruction. So Renee, I don't know if that has or hasn't happened, but put it on your list if it hasn't. Um, Bob and Renee were gonna meet with Carl Jones, but this is the guy who said he would help with the speed trailers, and that was set for the twenty second. Did that happen?
No, it didn't happen.
Okay, so it's rescheduled for when?
Uh, not, not, we're working on a new date.
Okay. Did something happen?
Yes, Renee couldn't make it and I had a dental emergency.
Oh, dental emergency. On the twenty second, rescheduling to come. Um, this one's a budget number four. The speed cameras, Bob set up a meeting, Bob to set up a meeting to make a presentation on the speed cameras. Um, we were gonna get that at a future trustees' meeting.
Hey, Dan?
Yeah.
Yeah, do you know that you're showing the, uh, shown place commissary kitchen application?
Oh, I am. I'm showing the wrong screen. Here, let me do this. Thanks. That better?
Yeah, that's a lot better.
Yeah, okay. Um, thank you. So Bob was going to take this as the speed cameras. Bob, you were gonna see if you could get them in here to come make a presentation to us?
Correct.
Okay, so that's still, still to be done. Okay, that's not tied to the bridge. Art wanted us to publish information. This was going to be in the mayor's, um, newsletter. Um, another call to Captain Delizer was requested on ten thirteen. Has anybody talked to him recently?
That's just an ongoing, we were, I mean, that's just an ongoing request. Um, the latest one was to pu- uh, put Maple, I mean, uh, South Street um, near the new stop signs. The neighbors on, on Maple had requested that, uh, they send out someone every once in a while to keep an eye on that stop sign.
Okay.
The new freeway, I meant, the always stop.
Yep. So Renee, this is something you're in contact with him about?
Yeah, just periodically as people, um, bring up, you know, new attention areas. I let him know what they are and and then he sends it out.
Okay, um, the speed century on Jefferson, which has obviously been moved, the current stance was to move it around. Where is, I haven't seen that around lately. Where is it and what is the schedule and kind of who manages the schedule?
Zach does.
It's on State Street right now.
On State?
Right as you enter the village.
Okay. Uh, this is ten twenty seven. Um, Zach, Zach is in charge of moving around?
Yes.
Okay. And you just do that every once in a while, kind of thing?
Yeah, I try to do it on a weekly schedule.
Okay. If we could give some love to North Main on the way in, you know, kind of right around line, that's definitely a place we've heard from people. If that hasn't gotten it placed there, it'd be great if it did.
You know what, Zach? I wonder, can we ask the town? Don't, don't they have one too? Because it's actually, it's like right at the town line when people are racing in, um, or is that?
And there would be, there would be a safer place to put it, Renee, if you did it just north of French Road.
Not sure if they still have a mobile one. Uh, I know they have a few permanent mounted ones, uh, out about here and there. I could reach out to them.
Yeah, may not be, maybe worth, take more time to reach out than just to move ours there, but it'd be good to have.
As long as there's a suitable sign to, to mount it on over there, I can put it there.
Yeah, they have a mobile one, right? It's on a trailer or do they have, um,
I believe they did. I don't, I haven't seen it in a long time, so I don't know if they still have the mobile one.
Okay, all right. Be good for them to, to get a couple on there, in there.
Yeah.
Okay, so Zach, you'll check with them on that. Um, that one we can't do. Dunn Hawthorne on Reed's. Anybody reach out to Dave Armini?
Who's Dave Armini?
He was the guy from RIT, he said, I do this for a living and he kind of said all the things that helped at RIT and he offered his services.
Right, no, I'm, I see it on your list. I remember who he is. I thought, um, someone was meeting with him. I thought for some reason that Mayor, Mayor Corby.
Was that being assigned? No, I don't, I don't remember that.
Okay, do we want to assign it to someone?
Yes. Hold on, my dog is rolling. I'm gonna go back on mute.
Who wants to take this one?
Why, why don't we ask Renee? I think it's right up her alley.
Okay.
Okay, I'll take it.
All right, um, uh, any, any news from DOT when there's another public meeting? I, I didn't expect this to happen in a week or two.
Not yet, but they did, one thing that they did, uh, contact me last, I think it was Friday. Uh, the State Street is going to be closed for two days at some time in November with alternating traffic while they have a lift to inspect the bridge. Uh, they don't know quite when it's gonna be and it will be weather dependent. Uh, we'll get additional notice, but it will be closed. It'll probably cause some backups with alternating one-way traffic.
So this is two, they're gonna close it for two days? This is well before the bridge construction?
It's for the bridge. They're doing inspection work on the bridge, but it's gonna happen, uh, this coming November.
Okay.
So as part of that, will they reach out to the, the neighbors to let them know?
Well, they're gonna forward me the press release once they have a tighter date known. Um, I sent out the email list we have of the State Street residents an email over the weekend to tell them that this was gonna happen.
Yeah.
Okay.
We should probably tell the whole village, this is gonna happen once we have info.
Well, once we know when it is, yeah.
Uh, I spelled that wrong. All right, but but regardless of that, regardless, that wasn't the issue we were tracking there. We were tracking another public information meeting with the DOT.
Which they haven't told us when that's gonna be.
Okay, so, so is anybody following up on that? Bob, do you want to follow up on that? Okay.
I've been talking to Josh at DOT. He assured me that he would let me know once they know.
And Bob, is that, so we anticipate that they're gonna have one more before the bridge closes? And also, a, a separate one or one together about the pedestrian improvements?
Not sure yet. I'm not sure yet. We'll, we'll find out. We're, you and I are supposed to meet with them again when they have additional drawings on the street improvements and we'll find out more then.
It was, it would be good if they rolled that together like they did last time.
It would.
Okay, all right, well, we'll put that on our radar.
Okay, so let me just capture both the, um, bridge.
We don't, right, we are, we're anticipating that they're gonna have one more before the bridge closing, one more information center section for the public. Um, we also mentioned that we would like them to do a public session on the pedestrian improvement.
Yeah.
Um, the various things that are happening outside of the bridge closure and before they rolled those two things together in a public meeting. So ideally, we could have them do that again. Did that capture it?
Yep, thank you. Um, David Levine near Rand, talking about bump outs. Bob, to walk the stretch near Rand on Jeff Road, come up with ideas. In, still in motion?
Still in motion.
Okay, and this is ten twenty seven. That's obviously a longer term one. That's obviously a longer term one anyway.
Yeah.
Dorothea, were you able to find that email on Donna Fleming's and get that over to the town?
Yes, I did.
Okay.
Nice. Cross that one on.
Yeah. Zach, you were looking at?
A better place for the twenty mile per hour.
Yeah.
Still looking.
Okay.
All right.
All right, thanks.
Okay, let's move on. I don't think we have anything additional on the active transportation plan.
No, just reminding everyone that on Thursday, the twenty ninth, this Thursday, there's a a meeting to go with the planning board on the the public schedule where we're gonna, the mayor and I are gonna go over all the feedback and go over any questions they might have. And the addendum that was in your pocket or pocket last time, or not the addendum, I'm sorry, the supplement, the updated supplement was forwarded to Supervisor Smith to look at as well. So that's it.
And I don't think we have anything new on the State Street Bridge item, so I'm gonna move to the trustee member items for trustee Sencer.
Actually, I think Lilly's gonna go first because or I should ask Lilly, do you wanna go first?
Can't hear you, Lilly.
It's one of her items. Oh, okay, all right. The first, let me pull up the the speed limit legislation. We, on Friday, there was a ribbon cutting for the East Ave sidewalk project completion, and I ran into Assemblyperson Burns there. And she mentioned that she has spoken with DOT about the twenty five mile an hour speed limit and that she was gonna meet with the mayor and with Supervisor Smith on next steps about getting specific about the intersections that we want the lower speed limit on. And I just listened because we have already been specific enough, which is we want every state road section that's in our village to to have a twenty five mile an hour speed limit. So I just wanted to make sure that was on your radar, Mayor Corby. I don't know when you're gonna be meeting with with her and the and the supervisor. And I just wanna make sure we're staying on. This was Marjorie Burns.
Okay, okay.
Um, so I don't, I don't want it to, it's likely gonna stall again in the Assembly and the Senate. And in my opinion, we don't need to change the language. It's already specific enough. So maybe she's talking about something greater. Maybe the the town has some specific areas that it too would like to lower the speed limit on. But as far as the village goes, we we've already given very clear parameters. We've got very small, short segments in the village, and I don't think we need to save certain intersections. So I I.
That's weird.
Yeah, so that was news to me. What what is good news is that she believes in this. Obviously, she introduced it in the Assembly, but, you know, she she was standing out on the street with us and and listening to to all the stories. And she said, oh, people walk and bike around here a lot. And I said, yeah, they do. And, you know, people live here often. They've moved here because of that. And, you know, cars were whipping by on on East Ave. So she she was very supportive of it. But I just wanna make sure we're clear and we stay on this because it's likely it's gonna stall out, and we wanna pick it up. And, you know, she also mentioned a support letter, and I'm like, we, you know, we've we've done this already. So I just, yeah, we'll keep doing it. But so it sounds like if you don't hear from her, it might be good if if you reach out to her.
I'll call her.
All right, that would be awesome. We're up to seventy three people having signed the citizen petition in support of it. I was hoping to have more more than that. So I know we can't send it out, you know, in a village newsletter. We've done all we can with Walk by Pittsburgh to to get it out. We've sent it out on neighbor to neighbor, but I would like to get a few more signatures, particularly around the village. So if anyone has ideas of how we can get that circulated a little bit more, just ping me offline, and I'll pick it up and run with it. The last thing is Hopper, the Bike Share. If you recall, they, I have a meeting with them on Friday from Sarah from Hopper, and we're gonna meet out at the library and walk some of the spaces, the high density areas where we think good potential locations for the Bike Share stations would be. And they're anticipating that they'll launch those in the spring. They're doing the same. It stalled in the city. They were supposed to to launch scooters and Bike Share in the fall. But it was a good decision that they're waiting till spring. So everything will launch, launch in the spring. But I'll have some more information after Friday. So by our next meeting, I'll know a little bit more about what they plan to do for Bike Share. So I am gonna circulate to all of you just the quick list of locations. There are only five that I have in mind. I don't know how many they're thinking, so but of our high density areas. And I've already forwarded them all the information in the active transportation plan where the pedestrian heat maps and the bike level of service and 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 all of that. So she's got some good data. It's a little bit old, but still, still some good data. Does anyone have any questions about the Bike Share? Okay, and then I'm gonna hold on my last item because I think it overlaps with one that Lilly's covering. And then I'll just tag on and ask some questions after that one. But that's all I have.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Lilly?
I try. Okay, I have two things. One is I I sent you information regarding backless benches that are of the same style as our donated benches. But these, I'm, I would say, let's put them on the wish list that we would purchase them and place them on the right of way somewhere between the Village Line before it gets to Wood Creek on that side of the street and the fifty State Street. And it's part of the branding of that as a neighborhood, as a pedestrian friendly area. And so I was asking the trustees to think about. I know money is tight, but it would cost about, it would cost in the neighborhood of twelve hundred dollars with the shipping. They had to get two benches and place them there. So I just want to be thinking about that. The second is that we will be putting up the lights shortly in the village. And the hope was that we could add more to our, the what we have going on presently. What we run into, as I have spoken to Zach about it, is that we don't have the capability in the light posts to add the strings of lights. So which is a big disappointment for me especially because I wanted to see them all the way down State Street to the Village Line. And we have the lights to do that, but we don't have the capability of plugging them in. The second spot is in front of the two, the Phoenix Building. There are two deciduous trees there to add B lights to those trees as well as the Christmas tree. The issue there is that we would need another outlet, and we have to get, request that from Mike Newcomb and also request permission to put the lights in those trees because the trees belong to Mr. Newcomb. The other place is at Remembrance Park. There are two extra outlets there, and we could add extra lighting. The whole, the whole overriding theme here is because of the pandemic and and people's spirits maybe being a little low, not being able to be with family, trying to find ways to sort of zhuzh things up a little bit in the village with more lights. And we have the lights, so we can do it, but we don't have the electricity. So that's the, that's the that's what I'm against. So we could add them to Remembrance Park as well. So if anybody has any other ideas about where we could place extra lights, thinking also that we need to plug them in, that's the part. We've got plenty of places to put them. No places unless we're to run extension cords all over the villages to our houses and and get them the light there that way. Speaking of which, I thought of the Auburn Park and lighting up Auburn Park. So those people drove by, you know, it could be all lit and charming and when people walk by. And but.
There's, there's no outlet.
The neighbors. No, there's one at the neighbors' though. I'm just saying, we could pay, we could like pay for the electrical use, but it's just a station. Okay. Zach has something to say. Zach has something to say.
So a while back, actually, November twenty nine, twenty seventeen, I got a quote from an electrical contractor to add GFI receptacles to the light poles. And he quoted me at a hundred and eighty eight dollars per light pole. They had receptacles to be able to plug stuff in. Just so everybody knows.
Oh, that's not as much as, okay.
I think that we ought to budget for that because we've talked about it for years, and I think it really would be helpful. Yeah.
Yeah, Lilly, I'm, oh, sorry, Zach, are you done?
I'm done.
Okay, Lilly, I love this idea. You'll see, I had Dorothea add winter lighting because I, a couple of years ago, we did a street films with Reconnect Rochester about winter, winter cities and what they do to make cities attractive during winter. And and during the pandemic, like what you just said, Lilly, we're outdoors. It's the only place we can see other people that we're not related to. And just helping bring some some business to the the businesses that are able to to be open during all of this and take advantage of our beautiful assets, our historic character, all of that. So I would, I totally dig it if we could light up the the trees on Shane Place and not just for the holidays, but like leave it up through the winter when it's dreary in January and January and February. And I know this is a budget, a budget thing as well. You know, could we look into solar twinkly lights? You know, things like that, something that wouldn't draw a lot of electricity. But, you know, having Shane Place lit up through the winter when it's snowy and 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 sparkly would be super awesome. So I support lighting everything up.
Yeah. I'm there. Well, if the trustees would like to think about how many light poles that they would, you know, be willing to spend money to have electrical added to them. That could, you know, that's something for the board to think about.
For a long time, I thought it would be nice to light the trees on Main Street, you know.
Yeah, same thing. State Street, Main Street, yeah, let's do it. I know it's, we we may not be able to do it this year with budget constraints, but let's be thinking about that. We've got, I mean, this would be incredible.
We have the lights, we just need the electricity. There wouldn't be any extra money for the lights. We have them.
So even this year.
So how, hi Rabbi.
Uh-oh, we can't hear you. We see you, you're talking. There we go.
It's good, you hear me now?
We can hear you.
Yes.
Okay, sorry about that. I really apologize. I thank you for still being around to listen to me.
That's all right.
Okay, good. Nice to see y'all. Mayor Corby. So I'll just as a start of saying, you know, simply what we're trying to do. And then I guess you have questions. Are we gonna write to the questions, whatever you, I guess you read my proposal?
Well, why don't you give a summary of what what you're trying to achieve?
Okay, so as maybe you know, we are the only Jewish center in Pittsburgh, and we we provide, you know, we do a lot of religious education for adults and for youth. We, when we bought the property in twenty twelve, we were, that was, you know, we we got a special use permit then in order to to do that. Up to a certain amount, I think it's fifty people at once at max. And so we've been doing over the years, we've been having, you know, Saturday services, Friday night services and Sunday school and teen teen education and Sunday nights. There's, over the years, we've, you know, we've, we have different families that come through. And now in in Pittsburgh, there's quite a few families with younger kids that are part of our congregation. And they want a, they've wanted, they've asked over the years to do a preschool to, you know, do like a Montessori, you know, Jewish themed, you know, values type of preschool. And that's what we're trying to do on a not, on a, you know, moderate scale.
How many, how many children, Rabbi, are you thinking?
So my wife's the one running it, and she asked it. So initially, we think, you know, you know, let's say in twenty twenty one, between five to seven kids, and she thinks the max could be fifteen, you know, in a couple of years. Have to build it up, you know, depending on congregation, you know, who who joins more. But in that, in that range of, you know, between at a low, you know, five, six kids and a maximum fifteen kids with you know, three to five.
Okay, every day, I'm sorry, Rabbi. Every day?
She would like to, she would like to offer it every day because that's where the best she's done preschool before we got married. She was a preschool director, teacher in Stanford, and that's really the ultimate in a similar in Chabad Center in a, in Stanford, much larger facility. But actually, she saw really the most, the the best, you know, the real usefulness of the program of teaching kids the Montessori and the education through that.
Okay, any questions from the board?
Those are my questions.
So I guess we have to make a motion to go to public hearing, is that correct?
Hold on, I have one question for Rabbi. How are you, Rabbi? Nice to see you. This is Dan. My only question is, you know, have you talked to the neighbors and what has their feedback been? And and I recognize that the, thank you for being explicit in your application that the parking is not really an issue because it's a drop off and a pickup. But what if the neighbors said, how have you engaged with them about that? Or how do you plan to engage with them about that?
I, well, you can start with Mayor Corby, you know, neighbor. But I asked my, I'd ask my, my, I, you know, I, I'm, we're very open relation with neighbors. And, you know, I would totally tell them, ask me concerns. Over the years with Sunday school, the only concern was when like some people park in front of someone's driveway, and we've taken care of that, you know. But typically, they've never been, I've never had a neighbor who wasn't, other than that, which was a legitimate gripe when someone, you know, doesn't realize they shouldn't park in some driveway you know, across the street. You know, they they know very clearly what we're doing. And I think they've been happy, especially compared that it was a, you know, it was an empty funeral home until then. You know, we're not, we're not a huge congregation. That's the thing. We're not, we're not this like bustling, you know, huge type of thing. It's, it's, it's a, it's a pretty moderate congregation.
As a neighbor, I can vouch for that. It's a very pleasant neighbor to have down the street. And I often see Rabbi out with his kids, and we wave. And other than that, you would never know they're there.
This is another question, Rabbi, is a little bit off topic. Are you doing the menorah lighting this year?
That's a really great question. I was actually, the answer is yes. The question is how to do it in an appropriate way.
Right.
So I guess we can have a, I I'm not sure because maybe we're in other, in my, my, the other Chabbards in Brighton and the other, they're gonna probably do like a drive through type of menorah lighting at the JCC. I don't know if maybe we can do something similar because usually we're very small, you know, congregating space on the sidewalk by corners. Maybe maybe for this year, we should move the the lighting summary to the the village parking lot or something, and people could just drive. I'm not sure. I was maybe something like that.
Well, if you wanted to do a drive by, you could perhaps, I don't know if they have electricity, but you could have put it at the Port of Pittsburgh Park, which is right on North Main Street. but you could have put it at the Port of Pittsburgh Park, which is right on North Main Street. And then people potentially could drive by it and it would still be in the center of the village.
Uh, that's, that's not near of, um, you're saying.
That's right, that's on North Main Street, the park on the canal right before you cross the bridge. It's across the street from Village Hall.
Right, but the thing is you want, you, I, I, I don't have it all mapped out on my own. People are going to want to be in their car and not to drive. They want to be like around for, you know, the 10 minutes or whatever it is. Yeah, so like they can't. So you need some sort of place that they can be there so they can hear, you know, the, you know.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't know.
Well, on the other hand Rabbi, they are having the tree lighting, uh, this year, wh- which is has about the same issues that you would have. And I think again, if you just ask people to wear masks and stay at a social distance, it might be okay.
Okay, if you think, I mean, I'm not, yeah, I think that's, uh, that's acceptable to, uh, the village and to what they're doing and with, with the tree. Then, um, yeah, I, I think something like that or, you know. I, 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 you know, we were just thinking like, maybe this year to do maybe like, um, I'm, I'm not really sure because we're, we're going to do a, a, a bigger event, um, uh, on like on Sunday. That's, that's Sunday, the 16th or something and maybe do like a, like a, like a, a, a car parade or something. Um, from like one end to the JCC. And we can include Pittsburgh, be, maybe they could be part of that, that, that parade, you know, maybe it could be like start at, you know, Brighton and go to JCC and then come to Pittsburgh and then, so, you know, it's not the individual thing of Pittsburgh, but maybe it's, maybe it'd be better to do it as part of that because we will be, we'll be more resources to that.
I know a lot of the, um, you know, those of us who live around here like to, to, to show up. So I do, I do like the idea of something outside where people could walk, much like the, the tree lighting, getting back to the, the menorah lighting, but, um.
I'm, I'm, I'm talking, happy to do, I just, I don't know what's, you know, what's looks good and what doesn't look good, you know.
I know the pandemic is not helping with my, my aversion to drive through everything.
Yeah, yeah. But yeah, I think that's, I, I, I think we may, it would be important to maybe do that anyways, even if we do the parade type of thing separate, uh, just to keep the Pittsburgh tradition going, you know.
Yeah.
I agree, I agree. I, I think people expect it. It's become a tradition now. And, uh, even if the crowd is smaller for it, it's just nice to see it there during the holiday.
Yeah.
Okay, maybe, I was thinking if we really want to get, I don't know, I, I, I actually don't know who to ask on the, on the board, but, uh, maybe it would be an idea if I could get some fireworks.
Oh, excellent. Yeah, that, that sounds good.
I don't know who does that at the, the canal and they do, I don't know who's the go-to.
Oh, well, it's, there's, it's Young.
Yeah, we know who, we know who that is.
We have contacts. It's the Young company. Jim Young is the principal and his, his, uh, significant other lives on, um, uh, Lincoln Avenue. Yeah.
Jim Young, okay. So that would be a way to just sort of add a pizzazz when people are not, you know, they might not be as much bi-crowded together, but they can look up or something.
So will they be menorah shaped or are we just going with regular?
He's got, you know, shaped, I'm cool. I love that.
That's a little hard to do. Maybe we'll just go with regular.
I'm sure someone's done it, you know.
Okay, so we have to, um, procedurally tonight, Steve, is this for a vote to go to public hearing? Or this is the public hearing?
No, this, this should be.
Now we have to have a public hearing, don't we?
Yeah, you have to make, you have to make the order schedule.
So again, I, I guess it would be again, since we did one earlier on December 8th. So I'll make a motion to go to public hearing, uh, to hear the application, uh, to, of the Rabbi to hold a daycare in school at the existing facility at the corner of Lincoln Avenue and Washington Avenue.
And Dan, do you want to? Um, sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
We got after the vote Renee, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm sorry.
Are you ready? Yeah.
We're ready.
Trustee Keating?
Keating, aye.
Trustee Lamphier?
Lamphier, aye.
Trustee Stetzer?
Stetzer, aye.
Trustee Galusha?
Trustee Galusha, aye.
Mayor Corby?
Corby, aye.
Motion passes.
And Rabbi, um, just so you know, we just did the same conversation for somebody else. Just so you know, we procedurally have to do it this way. The law says that we have to bring it to a public hearing and that public hearing has to be a certain amount of time away from today because we have to notice the public that this public hearing exists. So believe me, we would love to be able to talk about this and have a vote on it as soon as possible to help you and, and your business. But we can't, so we have to follow the rules and the, and so the rules say that the soonest that we could do that is December 8th.
December 8th, okay. So that, that's what it will be. I'll get some sort of, um, notice. So that's like the time in the meeting and.
I'll contact you with that information Rabbi.
All right, thank you so much.
And Dorothea, for that, the neighbors will get, do they get notified because of the proximity or?
Um, not typically. It's just the notice in the paper, um.
Okay, so then reaching out to the neighbors might be a good thing just to let them know it's the, um, okay. Not that they necessarily could show up, but, oh, sorry Steve.
I'll, I'll also be putting up a, a notice in the, you know, at the corner there, a, a placard notice, so.
Okay, so it would be good to reach out to them before that appears, just so they're not surprised, um.
All right.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, I'll make a mo- motion to adjourn.
No, 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 no. Me.
We didn't finish talking about lights.
Rabbi, we're done with you. If you need to go, so I'll meet you.
I'll see you later guys. Thank you so much.
Take care Rabbi.
Okay, who's first?
Um, I think we'll let, uh, Zach go. I can't.
I, I have some member items too, when the time comes.
Well, I have a Zach item too, uh, this, this relates to Mary's packet, Zach. Uh, Mary had in there that the board wanted, the board had to approve the, the work being done on Locust Street in the amount of $13,925 by Villager Construction. And Zach, I think you were going to explain what kind of work we were doing there for that much, for that much money.
Yeah, so, uh, this is something that came up a while ago, but I was originally going to have Mason Trenching, uh, quote me on it and I had asked him a few times for a quote, but he's too backed up and busy to be able to do anything with it now. Um, Villager Construction is on the Monter County bid sheet for this type of work and is to dig up the road, um, a cross connection from one basin to the other, going from 26 Locust to 27 Locust. And replace the, uh, rotted corrugated metal pipe spanning the two basins and rebuild the basins. Um, we are out of time ourselves with leaves and, uh, well, we have snow just around the corner too, so we're getting everything prepped for that. Um, if we waited around for, uh, for Mason Trenching to do it, I'm sure the quote would be, um, probably half the cost of Villager Construction, but that comes with all the spoils being dropped off at our shop from Mason Trenching. And we are running, we are running out of room in our yard for it. And also we would have to go back through and pave the road, which this is all stuff that Villager Construction would be taking, uh, care of, including getting rid of all the spoils for us. Um, time is of the essence because the asphalt plants are going to be closing. So I'm, I'm looking for an approval to be able to hire Villager Construction to replace the storm sewer pipe spanning the road on Locust.
So we have to make an official motion to approve, uh, the work on 26 Locust Street by Villager Construction in the amount of $13,925. That's, that's the motion. Anybody going to second?
I'll second it.
Question.
Okay, do we have a vote, Dorothea?
Go ahead.
Wait.
Lily's got a question.
Lily's got a question.
I have a question. Does this, is this out of the reserve or this is out of the sewer fund? Any?
No, this is not. It's not out of the sewer fund since it's storm related. Um, this is out of the general fund. I believe Mary said that she will have to access the funds through, um, through the reserves.
Okay, that's what I thought. Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, ready? Trustee Keating?
Uh, Keating, aye.
Trustee Lamphier?
Lamphier, aye.
Trustee Stetzer?
Stetzer, aye.
Trustee Galusha?
Trustee Galusha, aye.
Mayor Corby?
Corby, aye.
Thank you guys.
Motion passes.
One, one more thing.
I'm taking off. I don't, I don't need to be on here.
Good night Steve.
Yep, have a good night all.
Night.
I've, I've just got one more thing. Um, this was brought to my attention today. Uh, Taylor Sipple, who we had hired back in July, just put in this two week notice.
You're kidding.
I can't win.
Why? Why is he quitting?
Oh, no.
Money.
Well, that is what it is.
Yeah, where's he going? Yeah, where's he gone?
Uh, he's going back to a plow company that he was working, Plow Landscape Company that he was working for before he came here. Okay. So just let you guys know.
Thanks Zach.
Thank you, thanks Zach.
Thank you guys very much. Have a good night.
Yeah.
You too.
Okay, um, now Dorothea, you're up.
Okay, um, let's see here. First thing on my list is 2020 healthcare or 2021 healthcare, it should say, I'm sorry. Uh, we received the quotes. I've met with the insurance brokers. Continuing with the plan that we have comes within budget. It's 3%. It only went up 3%, so we're in a safe zone. The deductible went up a minor amount and even with that, we're still well within budget of what we anticipated for the upcoming year. So I just, my understanding, also speaking to them, dental is not going up at all. It's staying stagnant. The price isn't changing as well as the senior healthcare plans we have. So they are all staying the same. So the only increase we're seeing is the current one. So I just need the board to go ahead and authorize me to go ahead and sign the sheets for this, next year's healthcare. Is there any questions?
It's only a 3% increase. That's pretty good.
Yeah, there's a minor, as I said, on the, um, copay, but again, it's all, you know, putting it in my sheets. When I did, looked at this a year, you know, I'd, when I reviewed everything, I planned a year beyond what I'm looking at and it's still, I'm below what I anticipated. So it's all good. So if I can have a motion to approve this.
So moved? Do I have a second?
Second. Stetzer, second.
Vote.
Trustee Keating?
Keating, aye.
Trustee Lamphier?
Lamphier, aye.
Trustee Stetzer?
Stetzer, aye.
Mayor, oh, Trustee Galusha?
Trustee Galusha, aye.
Mayor Corby?
Corby, aye.
Okay, my next thing is, you've seen I provided you, we have to adopt the model resolution for the retention schedules. This is in the New York State Archives. I sent, gave you the news release about it and I gave you the resolution. So if we can make this resolution, we have to have this done before January because we're part of that system.
So moved? Do I have a second?
I'll second that. Trustee Galusha.
Gotcha. Trustee Stetzer?
Stetzer, aye.
Trustee Keating?
Keating, aye.
Trustee Lamphier?
Lamphier, aye.
Trustee Galusha?
Trustee Galusha, aye.
Mayor Corby?
Corby, aye.
And the next fun thing I have for you is the 2021 meeting schedule. Is there any changes, concerns, if it's good?
I have none.
Do I have a motion to approve it?
Good at this point. So moved?
I'll second.
Trustee Keating?
Keating, aye.
Trustee Lamphier?
Lamphier, aye.
Trustee Stetzer?
Stetzer, aye.
Mayor Corby?
Corby, aye.
Trustee Galusha?
Trustee Galusha, aye.
Motion passes. And unfortunately, there was something I was going to do and I needed to do it, um, but I need an executive session.
Can I?
For an employee matter. Yes, please.
Okay, I think, uh, Dan had some member items he wanted to do.
Couple of quick member items. Lily, to follow up on you on the bench, I really liked that idea. I think it's, it's a great one. Um, I don't know the answer to this, but I'm wondering, can we solicit whether somebody wants to donate that bench? And then they get their name on it in memory of something and, and then.
Yes, we, we've had two donations in the past, um, two months. However, usually people are pretty specific about where they want the bench placed.
Yeah.
And having it on State Street isn't one of the preferred places. So I thought I waited and I waited and nobody, nobody took me up on it. Uh, I even had some people at Wood Creek, if they, you know, donated for their friends, you know, in that spot and I haven't had any takers. So I thought maybe if we got the ball rolling by having one put there and gave people the idea that maybe that we might get some interest that way.
Well, we could also publicize.
That was my thought.
Yeah, we could also publicize that we're looking for people who want to sponsor a bench on this spot at this cost. Any takers?
Yes, I, I wasn't specific about the place, but we had it in, in, on the village website to, about donating a bench. So, um, people usually have like a sentimental reason why they want it placed in a certain spot.
Do we already, you thinking one on each side ideally or, um, to start?
I'm sorry, would you say that again?
Are you thinking one on each side, um, of State Street to start? Oh boy, that's my head.
No, we hear you.
You can't, oh, yes.
The Wood Creek side.
Just one, just one to start is, is what you were saying or?
Yes.
Okay.
To get the, get the idea out there.
And we're going to put it in a spot where, do we need DOT approval for that or can we, okay, we'll put it in a spot where we don't need to be in the right.
Correct.
All right. I mean, I know we're not there yet, but, um, okay.
Okay.
I love the idea.
Let's think about how to publicize that. And then my second one, I only have three. Um, Renee, I do have some ideas on the petition and how we could get some more signatures on that so we can talk about that offline. And then the third is I want to read the same statement that I read at the end of every meeting regarding 75 Monroe. Um, I'm still in favor of negotiating with Mark IV. The last we spoke of this was in the winter of 2019 and the idea was to have Bob, me, Susan Loda and Bill McBride sit down with Mark IV. This idea has stalled. I would still like to make this happen. Otherwise, we're waiting for the legal system to solve 75 Monroe, which we've seen no sign of and it's incredibly expensive. Again, as you recall, the negotiations would be non-binding as the subboards are the one with final approval.
Okay, does anybody have anybody else, anything else for the meeting? Okay, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Are we, do we need?
Executive session.
Right, and we didn't finish our lighting discussion. Um, do, um, do you want, I, I'd be happy to meet Lily, um, outside of here if you want to, um, throw some more ideas together about lighting.
Lily and I were going to, uh, meet with Zach. Do you want to be part of that Renee, if you want to?
No, you guys, no, I'm more than happy to. I have enough on my plate. I would love it if you.
Okay, so we're planning to meet with Zach this week to try to come up with something that's feasible.
Okay, I would like to, to consider leaving something up through winter, particularly this year, if we could in some strategic locations, if you could just add that to the discussion whenever.
Noted, noted.
All right, thank you so much. Okay.
Thank you. Okay, motion to adjourn on the floor.
No, 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 no. Now we make a motion to go to, um, executive session to cover an employee matter. Do I have a second?
Second. Lamphier.
Trustee Keating?
Keating, aye.
Trustee Lamphier?
Lamphier, aye.
Trustee Stetzer?
Stetzer, aye.
Trustee Galusha?
Trustee Galusha, aye.
Mayor Corby?
Corby, aye.
Okay, I'm just gonna.
I'll just Smith, M E C, whoever that is.
I'm going to stop the recording and lock the room.
This conference will now be recorded.
This conference will now be recorded.
Second here?
It was Frank. Frank beat me to the punch.
Frank. Okay, Trustee Keating?
Keating, aye.
Trustee Lamphier?
Lamphier, aye.
Trustee Stetzer?
Stetzer, aye.
Trustee Galusha?
Trustee Galusha, aye.
Mayor Corby?
Corby, aye.
Motion passes.
Make a motion to dismiss the meeting.
Okay, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second. Stetzer, seconded.
Trustee Keating?
Keating, aye.
Trustee Lamphier? Closed eyes on her.
My eyes are closed.
Trustee Stetzer?
Stetzer, aye.
Trustee Galusha?
Trustee Galusha, aye.
Mayor Corby?
Corby, aye. Good night everyone.
Good night, motion passes. Night, bye.
Bye.
Bye.